Better, as I shared, we can just process it better ourselves, empower our staff to directly do what they need to do. If we have problems with permits in the county, then we should be having our appropriate department talk to them directly or come to their person on the commission and ask if we have somebody downtown that we can talk to. But to pay another $60,000 to a person or entity, I don't even know who the person or entity might be, I'm sure they're fabulous, that's irrelevant. There's so many other things in here that I have issues with, including reducing our savings down to 11. We can make ourselves feel comfortable all we want by saying that's not a bad thing, but I'm pretty sure I hear the dropping of our S&amp;P rating going down as soon as we hit the gavel to say it's past. There's a reason for savings, an absolute reason for why we were able to do certain projects and certain projects that have been waiting and waiting and waiting and not getting done because we were building up that budget. I'm at a loss, believe it or not, for anything else because I am just overwhelmed how hard our team works to give us, as a commission, as a body, what we have asked for, or maybe what we even have not asked for, maybe is presumed it is asked for, to have a budget like this and then add on on this. We take away with one hand and we give with the next, with no rules, just right attitude? I am not supporting this budget as is. Think that's clear. Anyway, Vice Mayor Daniel, you wanted to speak?
Um, yes. I'm actually in agreement with the mayor. Last minute get to this is a bit much. Yeah, I got an instant headache. However, I do... Let me go to that page. I do agree with PIO because we've complained about the marketing of the city for every year I've been here in the communication. Everyone on this committee has said the same thing, that we don't communicate well with our marketing. So I don't know the cost, but apparently it's expensive. So I understand your ask. As far as traveling, you could cut my traveling, I don't need it. So whatever represent me, you could cut it. I'm not sure with the sister city why we need 25,000, but I guess that's something we'll vote on in the future. And if anything, it goes back, just like the traveling. What's that other one? It says PIO. The Business Expo, I know I've spoken to the chamber president, Mr. Peter Mason, that he, our businesses are in dire need, so there's no way I would, you know, I would agree with anything to help our businesses. So if that includes the Expo and the African-American Chamber, so be it. The supplies for the commission, for me, cut that too, because all I'm hearing is commission, commission. I can tell you last time I used supplies. I drink coffee, though. So... And I thought if it's under 60,000, you make the decision. So I'm not sure why, when it's being scrutinized, it's always the City Commission Office stuff and not any other department. That, 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 that right there bothers me. So that's my take on this whole thing. Thank you.
Commissioner Bolton?
Okay, so this city and few people on this dais has a tendency of pointing fingers to make it seem like I asked for stuff. And those who are on those people's payroll obviously believe that it's my stuff, I want to say, but it's not mine. So whoever wants to believe that or not believe that, your prerogative. I asked for City Commission travel budget to be reduced the last meeting. I don't know what Sister City is doing or what they're going to present. I've never been to one of their meetings. I do not agree with the PIO budget increasing binder printing or whatever that is. Increase operating supplies in City Commission Office, I don't know what supplies that is. I'm hardly here. My office is on the street and knocking on doors. Increase in economic development for Business Expo, I don't have an Expo. I don't, I don't even go to the chamber meetings, so hello, Peter Mason. Appropriate funding for PR consultant in PIO, well, PIO needs the help anyway, so, so whatever. And appropriate funding for grant African-American Chamber of Commerce, I've never heard of an African-American Chamber of Commerce. So for the record and all of your soundbites and whatever, I don't know what this is. However, I do support whatever the manager wants to bring. I've been here almost nine years and I understand that sometimes when you budget for things, programs come after. I'm a policymaker, so if a program comes afterwards and I'm not for the program, I simply vote no on the program. What are you going to do with the money then? You know? Whatever finance does. So maybe I can ask one of the finance staff members what happens if, for instance, we all vote no on Sister City or African-American Chamber of Commerce, or whatever it is? Where does the money go if, if we don't implement the programs?
I just wanted to point out that the budget is not actual money, it's an allocation.
That's not what I asked, just answer my question, please.
It stays in the general fund.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So 457B, my good friend, I'm all involved in reduce that for me, so I don't qualify for that. Travel, I think we reduce that to 12,000. And the new thing, where's the new slide? 30,000. I think last time we had a discussion about travel, it was 12,000 for the other commissioners and we're going to reduce that. So that part with the aid, I don't want the aid traveling with me. So you can take me out of having that ability for aid to travel. I'll, I'll put that back in the pool if that's possible, but I don't want to have aid traveling with me. What else? Other stuff, again, it's a surprise to me as well, it's kind of last minute, so I haven't got a chance to go through all the stuff. Again, I'm, I'm in favor of, I like what they did in Hialeah, to give a rebate, a hundred dollar rebate to 20,000 homesteaded homes, that's 2 million bucks, less than 1% of the budget. I know people are hurting. That's something that I saw, I think it was a brilliant idea, thinking outside of the box. Looking at the budget, VSO, I saw we went up by 7% for VSO. I want to read the newspapers, other cities, the sheriffs were, they went up from 10 to like 20, 27%. Pompano was 27%. So obviously at 7%, that's not a bad deal in terms of the increase. Yes, it's over the 5%, but you explained last time exactly what it is. Our fire department, their costs increased by 6%, so it's kind of in line, I don't think it's exorbitant. And the benefits part, again, I guess, you know, I reject additional benefits, I want the record to reflect that, that I reject those benefits. I don't support it because I don't think we should give ourselves additional benefits. And that's my feedback.
Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick questions, through to manager, through to finance director. The adopted budget for fiscal year 2425 was how much?
Do you have that number, Joe?
Two hundred and thirty-seven.
Because the materials, and I, and I just want to note, I'm not sure how we present budgets. I'm, I'm not, I really don't, I don't like looking at a budget without any historical data, so I would encourage you, manager, when we present a budget in the future, that we have some data reflective of the prior year for comparative and comparison purposes. I think that's important, because I, I have no idea, I'm getting emails that our budget increased 70%. I know the numbers, I just want you to put it on the record, because oftentimes we have these high-level discussions and we miss, we miss the facts because we get so caught up in some of the granular details around what the manager is trying to do with his organization. But I think it's really important that we know what the real, what the hard numbers are relative to percentage increase. So last year's fiscal, and no one knows that number?
No, we're getting the number for you, right there.
So the fiscal, the 2025 adopted budget was 237 million, roughly?
The adopted budget was 237 million, roughly. That was later amended. We amended that once.
So where are we today in terms of?
It's 240, it's 240 million.
240. And, because the, the presentation that's before us, the budget that's before us, it's talking about $175,000, but it's not telling me, what is the total budget for this fiscal year? Fiscal year 2526, what's the total number?
For 2526?
Yes.
The general fund is 114,195,279. And the total budget is?
The total budget?
293 million dollars.
And that's an increase of how much in terms of percentage? From last fiscal year to this fiscal year? I have it here. Zero point, excuse me, it's 23% of an increase. From FY 2425 to FY 2526. And our total, the City of Tamarack's total overall budget is reflective of a 23% increase. Is that accurate? Madam Assistant Finance Director, you seemed to be on it last time.
Twenty-three point eight percent.
Twenty-one percent?
Twenty-three point eight.
Twenty-three percent. So anybody that has miscommunicated on any, on any stream of social media or what have you, either A, because there's a misconception around the dialogue on this dais, or B, we just don't understand what's happening. The city has a 23% increase in its budget from 2425 to 2526. Is it fair to say that that is consistent with budget increase?
I think it, it depends on where you're looking at the budget. For example, in 2025, we had capital expense, CIPs, of only 19 million versus 27 million this year. So it's not, the percentage is not linear against all the expenditure categories. For example, the CIPs went up by?
Nine point nine million dollars. Approximately nine million dollars.
Approximately nine million dollars, which is almost 50%.
And I think, I'm glad you mentioned that, because in the FY 25 budget, 2425 budget, the capital improvement line item was 25 million dollars. This year, it's 37 million dollars. We're sitting on the dais and we're debating 175,000, which is .05% of the overall budget at 295 million dollars. I think that we have a responsibility to pass a balanced budget to ensure that police services are provided, that fire services are provided, that programs are funded, and that we ensure that the City of Tamarack is whole. And it's, and it's, we're talking, we're fighting up here over, oh, I don't want paper in the PIO department, right? I think we really, we really, because whatever the politics are, it's irrelevant. We just passed the millage, we redo, we kept the millage rate flat. The city manager has a responsibility to present services, programs, et cetera. And his, and he's presented a balanced budget to this commission. So for whatever the reality, whatever folks feel about whatever, I don't necessarily, I mean, I'm not going to argue with PIO about whether or not they need printing and paper. I mean, I, I just kind of think that we really need to kind of lift our perspective, raise our perspective around what we prioritize in our city, right? If we're talking about cuts, let's talk about substantive cuts. There's a 7% increase to VSO services? That's 25 million dollars? We're fighting over 175,000? I think that, and, and this is not a question to you, manager, it's just a statement. These are my comments. We really need to approach our city business from a higher level, you know, and really analyze what we're prioritizing in the greater scheme of things. Everyone in this city is important. All of our perspectives matter, the residents matter. Just because we hear from certain people, you know, in the commission setting, there's still 70,000 people in this city and everyone cares and prioritizes different things. We need to ensure that our services are diverse, that our programs are diverse, that everything that we make available to this community is reflective of diversity and it is inclusive. That's my perspective here. It is, I, I would make a motion to go ahead and approve the budget.
Well, not just yet. It is almost seven o'clock. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a seven o'clock meeting right after this. We will go right into that, but I'm going to give you a heads up. After we call roll call, we're going to take a 20-minute break. So, back to business here. No, some people, it'll be 15, minimum. There are people who have things that they must do. City manager?
Madam Mayor, by no means I want to minimize the, the, the 175,000 in the last minute. And this, and I understand your, your concerns. And, and this is presented in the name of complete transparency. We're talking about a 297 million budget the staff put together. And this is in the name of full transparency included in the last minute as part of this budget. I don't want to minimize the, the 175,000 by any means, but we operate a 297 million budget and the staff puts that together. We come up with all these numbers making up to that 297 million. And, and, and so, again, in the name of full transparency, we put this up there because it's been added in the, in the, in the last minute to the budget. And so I hope it's understood that it's, it's meant as part of our due diligence and transparency that it's being presented to you. So it's obvious the commission's prerogative to, to accept or deny, but I just wanted to make, you know, make it clear that this is part of our full transparency.
Appreciate that. Basically, I'll just take it this way. My being very displeased about the last minute 175 in no way, shape, and form means that I am not displeased with some of the other major items in this budget. I have expressed myself through our budget meetings, I've expressed myself through other meetings here. So it is just, that never got changed, certain things didn't get changed, and it is what it is. I do know the staff, as I said earlier, has worked very hard. So this, my comments are not based only on 175,000. We do have a significant budget, and I do think that certain things should be reallocated in other areas of our budget. I have said time and again, we need more employees and a little less some of the other stuff, where we can use the same dollars and make it a worthwhile budget where I would be able to support it. My issues come with that, but since it's never going anywhere, I am not line-eying them because it doesn't make sense to do so. Now, city?
Madam Mayor, there was a motion.
No, there's already a motion on the table, but I need to do something else, thank you. At this time, there is, there is a motion on the table already for not doing that.
There was a second previously?
There is a motion on the table to adopt the ordinance as is.
I just want to make sure.
At this time, at this time, there has been a request to amend the budget based on the last minute item that has been presented to us, and therefore, I will ask the maker of the motion, which is Commissioner Wright, and the second of the motion, which is Vice Mayor Daniels, do you accept the amendment in total that we have been provided? If the answer is no, it is no. I will then ask other questions. Commissioner Wright? The amendment of adding the last minute changes of the 175?
No.
Okay, so that has not been accepted. I will then go down the list. You want to get this?
Mr. Manager, these items of 175,000, is it included in the budget that's presented to the commission?
No.
Okay.
No, they're not included in the budget.
Okay, I just want to, so, so if they're not included in the budget, obviously you needed to include them through amendment, so they weren't included.
Your friend called a motion. So basically, the items that were added are not being accepted for a friendly amendment on it.
All right.
Okay, so, at this time, well, thank you for, I have my other minute that is now removed. Fine. I will defer. Commissioner Bolton, you wanted to have your last two minutes. Go.
Okay, so on procedure, you can call the question, the first motion. It can die, or it, I will vote no on the budget, just so that the commissioners are aware. History and, and experience will teach me to do this. So I'll vote no on the budget, and then we'll make a second motion to adopt the budget with the changes, and I'll vote yes at that time. So that, that's that. And again, I'm going to support the budget, not because of the items that are in there, I echo the sentiment of, of the mayor, that there are some things in this budget that I don't agree with. But what I do agree with is staff working hard to present a budget to us. It is at the end of September, October is next, next week, and we need a budget. So in order to move city operations along, I'm going to support the budget. But some of these items that are in the budget, best believe that when they come to me, I'm going to question them. I'm a policymaker, so I'm going to question some of the items that come before us for, for a vote. And at that time, it would be more appropriate to vote yes or no on those items. And if we vote no on those items, then it goes back to the fund balance. That is the recommendation of the finance director. So that's what I'm going to do tonight. Again, these items are not mine, I did not ask for them. And so, you know, to those who will say on social media that, that they're mine, they're not mine. So I just want to make that abundantly clear again, so.
So from, from a procedure standpoint, we, we have a motion, a second, without these, so, call a roll.
City clerk? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wright?
No.
Mayor Gomez?
No.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
No.
Commissioner Bolton?
No.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Motion fails four to one.
I, I make a motion to adopt the budget as amended with the city manager's recommendation of 175,000 dollars.
I'm going to clarify that Commissioner Bolton just made a motion to adopt temporary ordinance numbers 2600 as amended. Is there a second? Seeing no second, that'll fail.
Point of clarification, okay, Mayor, can you just slow it down for a second? This is quite confusing, and I think that we all, if you just give a second.
Commissioner Patterson, the motion that failed was a budget excluding 175,000.
Okay.
So now, Commissioner Bolton just moved to include the 70, 175,000 as part of the budget, and that's his motion.
Understood.
And I've stated it because it needed to be stated in the way that it is procedurally necessary for?
Because the?
The city clerk.
The finance director indicated that 175 was not included. Now, the motion was made to include it.
Understood.
We have a motion, need a second.
Second.
Thank you for stalling. Any discussion? I'm going to ask the question, city manager, which items of here, the added items, actually come back to us for a discussion and a vote?
It would be Sister Cities, it would be PR consultant, Economic Development, Business Expo, it would be considered a joint effort, and the chamber contribution.
You're putting on the record that all of these items will now be something that will come to us for a vote, as already pointed out, which are within your discretion?
Some, some, yes. Even though it's, it's within the, within that threshold, it would be a joint effort with the, with the City Commission, yes.
So you're saying Sister Cities, Economic Development, PR consultant, well, actually, PR consultant is, well, it is, you know, 60 is fine, and the appropriate funding for the chamber that is being requested, those four items are going to be coming back to the commission, is what you're saying?
That's the process.
And I expect that to be in the minutes reflecting the same.
Madam Mayor, you, you just pointed out that the 60,000 for PR consultant is 60,000, which is fine, under the commission, under the manager's threshold, but all of these items standing alone are under the manager's threshold.
Exactly, that's what I asked him. All these items are under?
Right.
Well, originally I had 80,000 next to it. You don't need to clarify.
Let me finish my thought, because you put something on the record that is not clear or true or factual.
Oh, you, really?
We cannot, we cannot say 60,000 is okay, so that does not come back.
I'm not saying it's okay. I asked if all four items are going to be coming back to this commission, the city manager has said yes, and the record will clearly reflect it when it's in the minutes. If nothing further, city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
No.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Mayor Gomez?
No.
Thank you, motion passes three to two.
Thank you. So it means the budget passed as amended, is what it means. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a budget and we have a millage rate. Thank you very much to our team who's worked very hard. And at this time, our budget hearing is now over, it is 7:07, and welcome, everybody. We are now opening the commission meeting. Our regularly scheduled commission meeting is seven minutes late. City clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gomez?
Present.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in recess until 7:25. We'll see you in a little bit. Thank you.[1604.65] And at this time, our budget hearing is now over, it is 7:07, and welcome, everybody. We are now opening the commission meeting. Our regularly scheduled commission meeting is seven minutes late. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gomez?
Present.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in recess until 7:25. We'll see you in a little bit. Thank you. And gentlemen, welcome to, welcome back to Wednesday, our September 24, 2025 commission meeting. It is now 7:26. We've already done roll call, we're moving right along through this agenda. Forgive us if it's one big thing, we've already also done our pledge. Vice Mayor, we'll get you next time. City Attorney, you have a report.
Just a brief report, Mayor. Federal lobbyist Becca Polikoff introduced me to a New York law firm who basically has asked the city to participate in a class action lawsuit relating to PVC pipe manufacturers' collusion in selling pipes to local government and private parties. There's a class action lawsuit that the city can participate in. Eventually, obviously, have our opportunity, we get the reward of economic damages without the city. Basically, I'm asking the commission for consent to participate in a class action lawsuit.
You need consent, not a motion, correct? This item is fresh to us, but has been explained. Commissioner Patterson? Do you consent to?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Wright? Vice Mayor Daniel? Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
You've got consensus of the whole. Thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, look at us from the navel up, please. We're first going to go to a presentation of a charitable donation to Dare to Care. This was requested by Commissioner Crystal Patterson. Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. If I can call Ms. Hill. All right, Ms. Hill, it is my honor to present a donation of $1,500 to support the impactful work of Dare to Care in our community. Your mission of providing access to resources that meet the physical, social, and spiritual needs of individuals and families while preserving dignity and affirming self-worth is truly inspiring. Your weekly grocery distribution serving more than 400 families and the annual Thanksgiving food drive, which provides holiday meals for over 2,500 residents, are critical efforts in addressing food insecurity here in Broward County. I commend your dedication to ensuring that residents have access to nutritious food and compassionate support. Your ongoing partnerships with Farm Share, Feeding South Florida, and Gateway Highlight the importance of collaboration in serving our neighbors. This contribution reflects my support and gratitude for the tireless work you do. I am confident it will assist in furthering your efforts to make a meaningful difference in the lives of the families you serve. Thank you for your continued commitment to building a stronger, healthier community. I look forward to seeing the ongoing impact of Dare to Care and encourage others to join in supporting your mission through volunteering, donating, and spreading the word.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so very much, Mayor, commissioners, and guests and community members. Dare to Care started in 2004, and we do serve four to 500 families each week at our Dare to Care site. We rely on volunteers, so I encourage any of you who would like to come out on Saturdays and volunteer, we welcome you. We serve residents from all of Broward County. We will have a Thanksgiving food drive at the Faith Center, we partner with them, on November 22nd, and we serve about 2,000, over 2,500 families. and we serve about two thousand, over twenty-five-hundred families each year, and that's through donations. So I encourage you to come out, share the word with your constituents and family members, and we'll be happy to see you. Thank you so much again for this honor and for the donation. It will help our food drive, so thank you very much.
All right. This next proclamation was requested by our Chief Information Officer, James. Whereas the City of Tamarac recognizes that it has a vital role in identifying, protecting, and responding to cyber threats that may have significant impact to our individual and collective security and privacy. And whereas critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems. And whereas Secure Our World campaign has been designated as a national public awareness campaign, which demonstrates that while cybersecurity may seem like a complex subject, ultimately, it really is all about people. Whereas the President of the United States of America and the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the Multi-State Information Sharing Analysis Center, the National Association of State Chief Information Officers, and the National Cybersecurity Alliance have declared October as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. And all citizens are encouraged to take basic steps to protect your online information and privacy and to make smart cybersecurity decisions, whether on the job, at home, or at school, now and in the future. Now, therefore, I, Michelle J. Gomez, very proud mayor of the City of Tamarac, Broward County, Florida, along with our commission, do hereby proclaim October twenty-two-five as Cybersecurity Awareness Month at the City of Tamarac, and we are officially supporting National Cybersecurity Awareness Month and the National Public Awareness Campaign, Secure Our World.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Commission. For over twenty years, the October's been recognized as Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and it's our goal as always just to raise awareness of the cause. You know, cybersecurity is really important. There's a few simple things that everyone can do. Use strong passwords, use multi-factor authentication, install antivirus into your software. Throughout the month, October, I believe our city is going to be also posting a few items on social media as far as recommendations, suggestions, to try to be safe at home when you're online. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you and your team. We do get emails that try to figure out if we know that we're being fished or not, so we appreciate it. My English is not so good today. That's where it is. Yeah, grammar police, please forgive me. The next one is requested by Human Resources Director Danielle Dorgan. This is for Human Resources Professional Day proclamation. Whereas the City of Tamarac recognizes the city's human resources professionals for their important work that they do, who have a significant impact on the city, and who provide excellence always in customer service to employees, residents, vendors, and contractors. And whereas HR professionals help employees adapt to an ever-changing and competitive environment while responding to workplace needs and economic challenges. And whereas these professionals design comprehensive and competitive programs, which includes administering pension plans, leave policies, wellness programs, and insurance policies. Whereas these professionals work aggressively to recruit, onboard, and retain top talent who meet the skills and experience of a position and who also align with the city's culture and values. Whereas these professionals recognize our outstanding employee achievements and encourage the professional department of employees by designing training programs that empower and drive increased performance. And whereas the Human Resources Risk Management Professionals identify potential risks by implementing procedures to proactively prevent incidents from occurring, as well as providing training resources to teach employees to conduct their work safely. And whereas the City of Tamarac Human Resources Professionals live their mission daily by enhancing organizational decisions that depend on and impact people by their teamwork, professionalism, integrity, innovation, and accountability. And whereas HR Professional Day is an opportunity to show appreciation for human resources professionals and the valuable work that they do every day. Now I, therefore, Michelle J. Gomez, very proud mayor of the City of Tamarac, on behalf of this commission, do hereby proclaim Friday, September twenty-sixth, twenty-two-five, and encourage all residents, businesses, and community partners to join the City of Tamarac in recognizing and celebrating HR professionals for their dedication, leadership, and invaluable role in helping to shape the new future. Thank you to all of our professionals and our HR Director.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Nikki Mayor. So today, we had a great deal of fun. We had lunch today just thanking my HR professionals in this organization. So again, thank you for all their hard work, and we hope to continue this every year. Thank you.
Thank you. You and the team definitely do a great job because we have wonderful employees here in the City of Tamarac, so we thank you. This proclamation was requested by myself, Hispanic Heritage Month, and I'm very happy that we have Andres. I'm gonna screw up. I'll just let you say your last name when you get here.
Manjares.
Manjares. She wrote it too nice. I can't read. It's okay. He is the president of our Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. You're still very involved. I see you at the meetings. Very past president is not. Whereas the United States is a nation woven with the threads of diverse histories, cultures, and contributions of immigrants from all around the world, each uniquely shaping the character of America. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is observed annually from September fifteen to October fifteen, celebrating the histories, cultures, and myriad of contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas this national celebration began in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded in nineteen eighty-eight by President Ronald Reagan to encompass a full month beginning September fifteen, a date that coincides with the independence anniversaries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, followed closely by Mexico and Chile. And whereas the City of Tamarac is home to a vibrant and growing Hispanic community that represents a wide array of nationalities and cultures, contributing significantly to the richness, diversity, and vitality of our city. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Chamber of Commerce, founded on July thirty-one, twenty-seventeen, has been a vital force for economic empowerment, entrepreneurship, and cultural pride across Broward and Palm Beach counties, advancing its mission to empower and elevate Hispanic entrepreneurs and business owners through connection, advocacy, and collaboration. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Chamber of Commerce has provided vital resources and opportunities to Hispanic businesses, business owners, supporting growth and development through training, networking, strategic partnerships, and advocacy, thereby enriching both the cultural and economic landscape of South Florida. And whereas the Hispanic Heritage Chamber of Commerce exemplifies the aspirations of leadership and achievements of the Hispanic community, promoting inclusivity, entrepreneurship, and empowerment, while strengthening the social and economic fabric of our nation, our region, our nation too. Now I, therefore, Michelle J. Gomez, very proud mayor of the City of Tamarac, on behalf of the commission, do hereby encourage all citizens to learn about and celebrate the contributions, culture, and economic impact of Hispanic Americans in our community, and proclaim the period of September fifteen to October fifteen, twenty-two-five, as Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank God for allowing us to do this amazing work. Thank you to the City of Tamarac, great partners, always open doors to advance our mission to not only help the Hispanic community, but the entire community. We're very proud that we've touched thousands of entrepreneurs, business owners already within Broward County and Palm Beach. I really encourage everyone to get involved. You guys have a local chamber as well, but obviously, we're allies to any mission that furthers and expands the opportunities that we have in this amazing country to continue to grow our entrepreneurship and business opportunities for our community. So thank you. Thank you for this.
Thank you. Thank you for all what you do. Thank you. City Manager, your report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tamarac is launching the Tamarac Be Kind Campaign, following the city's resolution on anti-bullying and anti-hate. This campaign begins this week with Peace Week observances, and on October first, residents will see a temogram feature and citywide press release. The official launch will take place at the October eighth Commission meeting with a proclamation and distribution of campaign materials. Please also be on the lookout for additional initiatives in the months ahead. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, a time to unite in support of survivors, raise awareness, and strengthen our commitment to prevention. As part of this effort, Broward Sheriff's Office will host a domestic violence in partnership, Domestic Violence Summit on Saturday, October fourth, from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty a.m. at the Tamarac Community Center. All residents are encouraged to attend this important event to learn, connect, and stand together against domestic violence. And again, we have a lot of things happening in the next month or so. We have a garage sale, we have Halloween hoopla, we have Great Pumpkin Splash, Food Truck Fridays every second and fourth Friday. So for a complete list of Tamarac events and activities, please do visit our website. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We will now go to public participation. The rules of the road are above. As a reminder for some, if you're happy with what somebody says, we do this. If we're not so happy, we do this. We try to not be vocal about it because we don't want to intimidate anybody and make them feel like what they have to say is not important. You have three minutes. We don't share minutes. Please state your name and your address. If you're not comfortable with your address, please state the city where you live, or the county at least. All right. I will share that I am missing one piece of paper. I do apologize. So I think I might have accidentally walked that back to my office with a budget book. So I'm just going to go with the names I have now and then ask anybody who wishes to speak to do so. I have Ron Wasserman. And this is for any item that is not on the agenda.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ronald J. Wasserman. I live at eight-five-seven-seven J Drive here in Tamarac. I normally come to speak with you, and I have complaints, and things are not right. But tonight, I just want to touch on a few things, and thank you for listening. I want to speak about cancer tonight. Cancer has to be the devil working on this earth. From left to right, thank you all of you for your cancer contributions, your interest. Madam Patterson, thank you for the mammograms. Very important. I'm a colon cancer survivor, and I'm proud to be alive. I'm so grateful to be alive. So tonight, we speak about many different types of cancer. There are a hundred and eighty different types of cancer, maybe two hundred. My brother died of a very rare eye cancer. So I've been remiss. The last time I spoke, and my voice got loud, and I had something important on my mind. I never have remarks put together, but tonight, I'd just like to say a few things. Last Friday, I had a meeting with our new captain, Captain Banks. Captain, I wish you all the luck. You looked at me straight in the eye. Very important. For those of you, and you kind of know who I'm speaking of, who want to look through people, forget about it. Thank you, Madam Daniel. Thank you so much for your help. Marlin, I've known you for years, years. I want to thank everyone in the back. Sometimes you've helped me, sometimes you have not. I'm here tonight to speak on another issue, but tonight, I just look at all of you behind me, here, there. Please get tested. Please get tested. I'm also a heart survivor. I've got a defibrillator and all kinds of other good stuff. This is not about my personal health, but asking you behind me, be tested. Don't leave it up to the family to say, oh, we could have helped. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. The other person I have signed up is for a specific item. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right, I've got Carol Mendelson, and then I've got Mark Ogan.
Carol Mendelson, Woodmont. I've purposely been silent for quite a long time, choosing to sit and observe prior Commission meetings regardless of the dysfunctional behavior. Every time I have spoken, it has fallen on deaf ears. Well, not all of you, so thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Wright. So once again, for these three minutes, you can look at your phones, mumble to each other, roll your eyes, and attack me when you speak. I have numerous asks that I hope you take the time to reflect on. I ask that you remember you are elected officials. I ask that you behave in the capacity befitting the title you hold. I ask that you remember that people trusted you when they elected you to represent them. I ask that you put your egos aside for the good of the city. I ask that you stop disparaging constituents from the dais and thinking it's okay. I ask that you stop acting like children, embarrassing yourselves and us. I ask that you vote objectively and not reject charitable organizations like Kate Johnson's because you don't like the truth she speaks. I ask that you stop giving gift cards when it is our money you're handing out as a gift and awarding yourselves perks. I ask that if change is warranted, and I believe it is, that it be done collaboratively without violating sunshine law. I ask- live in the east in Commissioner Bolton's area that still get Fort Lauderdale water and not Tamarack. We've been told we're going to get Tamarack water. People are asking when, when, and when, especially since two weeks ago, we turned on our faucets and got yellow water for a while. Because Fort Lauderdale, in doing some improvements, they call it, over Prospect Road and 31st with that water plant extension, they put some stuff in the water, so we were getting yellow water. A lot of people are worried, is it sick? Going to make them sick? Have to go out buy bottled water? We didn't get anything from our city on the notice that this was happening, and brought up the question again, when are we going to get the water pipes changed that we were promised to get city of Tamarack water and not Fort Lauderdale? Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Do you want to address that?
Madam Mayor, this has been a project that's been in the works for quite some time, and the work is in the permitting phase with FDOT, but it's getting pretty close to going out for bids. So, it's good news.
Yes, it is. Very much so. Thank you so very much. Public comments or public participation is now closed. We will go to commission reports. Commissioner District 1, Commissioner Bolton.
Thank you, Mayor. So, many of you have been seeing the Tamarack for the Cure event that is coming up on October 11th. I'm just blown away with the level of support that we're getting from the local community and, you know, surrounding communities with the signups and people calling us to be a part of the event. So, I'm very much sure that this is going to be an absolutely wonderful event. If you don't know about the event, please go to tamarack.gov/cure. It will be a 5K run walk at the Tamarack Sports Complex. Registration starts at 6:00 a.m. that morning, and the first race is at 8:00 a.m. We do have Olympic and world champion Johan Blake coming to the city of Tamarack to lead out the races. It's going to be absolutely phenomenal. And so, through the manager, I'd love to invite all of the employees here in the city of Tamarack to come and run for free. And I might want to mention that reigning Miss Jamaica Universe, Dr. Gabrielle Henry, will also be there for photo ops and autographs, and kids are just loving it because they'll be able to take pictures with her, and she'll be at the event as well. Couple of other celebrities are going to be there. I don't want to spoil the news alert that's going out, but we have seven international celebrities. We're talking about celebrities that even have 11.5 million followers. So, please make sure that you stay tuned for that event. I want to make mention of the Hispanic Awareness Month celebration that the city had the other day. Absolutely phenomenal. Thank you so very much Parks and Recreation, and of course, our Public Services Department, all of the people who were a part of that event. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful job. Well-attended, well-put together. And as an event planner myself, I was blown away with the level of professionalism that I saw there. So, kudos to the Parks and Recreation Department. And finally, I just want to give a shout-out to one of our employees. The next meeting, I'll be asking for an award to be presented to her, but her name is Simi And one of our residents, Jackie Vernon Thompson, who happens to live in District 2 with pretty much 3 million followers across her platform, took the time out to call me today to just give a kudos for Simi Pretum, that she called about a concern that the resident had with the increase in water usage. Although this is the job of Simi to do that, I'm sure the resident felt that Simi was very genuine in her approach. They talked about the city of Tamarack and how she could reduce her water bill and that sort of stuff. So, the time it took Simi to make that phone call was just warm and appreciated. So, Simi, wherever you are, congratulations on that. Kudos. And please make sure that she's here at the next commission meeting. I believe it's going to be in the morning, so very timely. I would love to see her. And for all of the residents who are complaining about infightings, I don't think we have infightings. As a matter of fact, you know, our Tamarack for the Cure event, Commissioner Wright, thank you very much for sponsoring the event. Commissioner Patterson and Vice Mayor Daniel, thank you so very much for supporting the event. And for those people who might think that I'm not including the mayor, that's not true. We had a very good conversation in our office. She would love to be a part of the event, but she's otherwise conflicted that morning. So, to everybody, some people that think that's the case, that's not the case. And for those people who think that we are children, well, do not ask the children for endorsement when you're running for your election. Stop it.
Commissioner Wright, District 2.
We have my report, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Patterson, District 3.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to staff. We had a very successful meeting at Spring Lake North just, I guess, last week. I want to, you know, just acknowledge first of all, the community for, A, reaching out to my office, raising attention and awareness to the issues and concerns that they have in their community. But subsequent to that, we were able to organize a very well-attended community meeting. And so, you know, I just wanted to, you know, again, thank the staff and the community. I think, you know, it was important that we were able to bring the city or bring the government to the people. And so, you know, contrary to some of the things that we might hear at the podium, we are pretty committed, and we're working pretty hard. And so, I just, you know, I kind of just want to, you know, on some level, you know, just redirect the narrative, if that's even necessary. It probably is not even necessary to address, but either which way or the other. I also want to make mention of the mammogram event that I have on October 27th. At this point, I don't even know if we can take any more people. I'm really excited about the number of folks that engaged our office and signed up to get their free mammograms on October 27th. While I'm not sure that we're quite sold out or booked, I would still encourage those of you that are interested, who maybe have not heard about the event, that on October 27th, at the Tamarack Community Center, we will be partnering with the Christine Elin Wellness Center to bring free mammograms to Tamarack residents. And so, you can call 954-597-3472 to get signed up if you haven't done so yet and you're interested. And lastly, I do want to echo the mayor and her proclamation, and Mayor, Commissioner Bolton, in wishing our Hispanic community a very happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Several things coming up. Thank you for those who showed up to our line dancing on Thursday. Even though it was canceled, we still had 20 people showed up in spite of the rain, and we went ahead and did it anyway, and it was awesome. It was good exercise. It aligns with what Ron was saying about taking care of our health, our hearts. God forbid if any of us ever have cancer or will get tested, Ron, based on what you said. But please come out. Our next line dance will be October 2nd, the 2nd of October at 6:30. This time, we have it at the community center. So, come rain or shine, we will have it. So, come out and have some fun. You'll be surprised, even if you look stupid, it doesn't matter. I looked the worst. But I did learn two steps. I'm going to practice on YouTube and show everybody next Thursday that I could dance for at least five minutes good. Another event I have coming up is called Little Voices. We'll have a licensed speech pathologist who will help families in the community, help their kids, support their kids in communication and development. In this age where we have a lot of technology games, our children, our young people, they don't communicate a lot, right? So, this is just another avenue to teach them how to communicate with each other, how to develop social skills. So, come out. It's free. Trust me, if you had to pay for this, it would be extremely expensive. So, if you have young ones, you see they're just always on the games, or you have a baby who is two, and they're not yet talking, come out. Speak to a speech pathologist, learn some strategies in how to get our young kids to socialize better and to communicate better. On October 11th, Miss Universe will also be at our event. It's called Pouring Into Purpose, where we celebrate dating women and what they've done for the last 13 years. Her name is Dr. Henry, I believe. So, come out, meet Miss Universe. She's absolutely beautiful and smart. Somebody call us Pretty Duns one day, but this lady is actually extremely smart and pretty. Just come out and take a look and enjoy some time with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I will be missing another one of your line dances because I'll be breaking the fast of Yom Kippur that night. And I had another one, but that's a most holy night for me, so I will not be able to be there. So, I'll just go in reverse. So, wishing everybody who's celebrating Yom Kippur a very good tomorrow. G'mar, hatimata tova, basically wishing you inscribed in the Book of Life. And if you're fasting like I am, may you have an easy fast. October 7th will be marking two years since the awful attacks and killing of people in Israel, and unfortunately, not everybody is home yet. Affordable Housing Report, we were actually, the county will be receiving the report that the Affordable Housing Committee that I'm the chair of has put forth, and hopefully they will approve it. It was wonderful to go to HCA Woodmont, our cath lab. It is bringing back the state-of-the-art medical procedures to our city. I'm very glad that they decided to come back here, and the doctors are phenomenal. I want to make the record clear about something that was said probably a couple of months ago at this point, but I think it's worth saying to the staff, I apologize because I misspoke. I want to make sure that it was understood that at the school expo, there was confusion on whether or not there was one table per everyone on the commission, or if there's one table, it'll be shared by the commission. And I said that was one table for each. I was wrong, and I'm sorry. It was one table for all of us. We had women on the course on the 17th, Wednesday of last week, at Colony West, about 50 to 60 women there who are going to learn how to play golf and realize that golf is for them too. Wonderful time to interact. And there were some men there, so men, you're welcome to learn how to play golf if you want. No judgment, just play some golf, little sip and chips afterwards, a little night golf with some beautiful little glow-in-the-dark balls. Had the opportunity to go to a new business in the city. It's called Bluebirds. And they are, after 40 years, bringing their business to Broward County from Palm Beach. They are pediatric practice in Midway Shopping Plaza. They have experienced pediatricians there for every child in our community. They offer same-day sick visits, evening appointments, school and sports, physicals, and more. Accept all kinds of insurance, including Medicaid, and they make care accessible for all people in the family. I was there, and there were three kids who were in wheelchairs and an autistic child, and I watched how comforting they were to the parents and to the children so they can receive their care and comfort and not be so afraid of the big, bad, scary doctor's office. Appreciate our property appraiser, Marty Carr, who was here for our deed fraud event and telling us all about how to protect our homes. If you've missed it, I'm sure Marty will come out again, and there's plenty of stuff online, or you could just ask some of us that were there. We'd be happy to talk with you. As Commissioner Bolton said, I've got running on Tamarack going that morning, and this is a more competitive 5K group. They run and they walk, and so that's going on the same morning as Commissioner Bolton's Run for the Cure. Plus, I also have Move with the Mayor at 10:35 for Bare Bar Fitness, if you want to come workout for that. And that evening, I'm very happy to say we have our, or my third annual Ha-Has for the Ta-Tas. It is a fundraiser for cancer awareness, obviously a little dedication to breast cancer. We have three wonderful comedians. We have a very light auction. We've got great food, and you're going to come there and forget everything once you go into the comedy part, but you are there to learn more about cancer awareness because it does affect a lot more people than we realize. I will thank Commissioner Patterson again, as she is bringing the van that actually caught my cancer. It was a very well-done van, and it's 3D, and I'm going to ask men, don't forget, you have mammary glands. Get yourselves checked, because the last thing you want to tell your family is, oops, I was too embarrassed. Get them checked. A smushigram for everybody. So, I just want to thank everybody for making sure you take care of your health. Colonoscopies, prostate, everything. Don't be embarrassed by your body. Your body is one of the most remarkable things that we have been given, and we need to take care of it. All righty, reports are done. We now will go to the consent agenda. City Manager, do we have any additions or deletions?
Mayor, I don't have any additions or deletions, but I do have a, I would like to point out that Item 5F, the grant, and you do have an updated memo and reso on your desk, and that's to notify you of the change that was required by FDOT of a maintenance agreement because the work is being done on a FDOT easement, and so, it's a difference of about $17,000. It takes the project cost from $371 to $388, and so, it's just to change that number.
Do we have it in the budget? Thank you very much, City Manager. I'll take a motion in a second. Oh, is there anyone wishing to pull an item? Commissioner Bolton?
Yes, Madam Mayor. 5E.
5E? 5E is pulled. Do I have a second to my motion to accept, to pass the consent agenda minus 5E and with 5F as amended?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Patterson to my motion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5 to 0 as amended.
Thank you. City Attorney, please read 5E, TR 14322 for the record.
Item 5E, Resolution, City Commission, City of Tamarack, approved payment amount of $6,588.68 to SHI International Court for additional Microsoft license, subscription to up-cost ratifying pass expenditure with SI, SHI, in amount of $74,742.02 for fiscal year 2025, according to Section 6-145B6 of Tamarack Procurement Code, provided for effective date.
Thank you. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
Move in.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bolton. I have a second by Vice Mayor Daniel. We do not have a presentation on this.
your desk, and that's to, that's to notify you of the change that was required by FDOT of a maintenance agreement because the work is being done on a FDOT easement, and so it's a difference of about $17,000. It takes the project cost from 371 to 388, and so it's just to change that number.
Do we have it in the budget? Thank you very much, City Manager. I'll take a motion in a second. Oh, is there anyone wishing to pull an item? Commissioner Bolton?
Yes, Madam Mayor, 5E.
5E? 5E is pulled. Do I have a second to my motion to accept, to pass the consent agenda minus 5E and with 5F as amended?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Patterson to my motion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Thank you.
Motion passes 5 to 0 as amended.
Thank you. City Attorney, please read 5E, TR 14322 for the record.
Item 5E, Resolution, City Commission and City of Tamrac, approved payment amount of $6,588.68 to SHI International Court for additional Microsoft license, subscription, true-up costs, ratifying past expenditure with SHI in amount of $74,742.02 for fiscal year 2025, and according to Section 6-145B6 of Tamrac Procurement Code, provided for effective date.
Thank you. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
Move in.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bolton. I have a second by Vice Mayor Daniel. We do not have a presentation on this item. I will open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to make any comments on this item? Seeing none, public comments are now closed. Commissioner Bolton?
I'd like a presentation.
Do we have a presentation?
Mr. Twigger.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioner, James Twigger, Chief Information Officer for the city. Just a quick background information first. The city has had a Microsoft enterprise agreement, so we started using enterprise agreements back in 2010, give or take. It's been 15 years. An enterprise agreement is a three-year agreement, Microsoft, that helps us ensure the best pricing available. You know, as a smaller city with a smaller number of devices, users and whatnot, if we went out to bid on its own, it would be harder to get the same pricing that we do in that agreement. So leveraging quantity of scale through the state contract, we're able to get the deepest discounting available, they call it Level D. By buying the license agreement, rather than having to go and buy the licenses, like whenever you get it at Windows 11 or Windows, whatever comes next, instead of having to buy the full product next time around, we also bought in, we bought the original licenses back in 2010, and then we also pay a maintenance charge with that. So that way, a smaller maintenance charge is all we have to pay going forward, short of additional increases in quantities. So that way, over time, the city saves quite a lot of money. But as part of that agreement, we are also required to pay what's called true-up charges. So during the course of the year, we might hire more staff, or maybe there's other third parties that we engage with. We have certain usage charges for what we do in the cloud and so on and so forth. So we have to true-up towards the end of the year to pay those additional charges that we get. So like I said, back in 2010, we had the original agreement, then just a quick history. So in 2013, we also, as the IT Department for Southwest Branches, they came onto our enterprise agreement, so they paired their fair share. That's actually plus a 15% markup because we're doing the billing in that. And then the most recent agreement was from October 2022 for three years. So we will actually have another item before you come October for the next three-year renewal, but it's purchased through the state contract, which by doing so, in the economy of scale, gives us the highest level of pricing or discounting available through Microsoft for those items. When we did this, the required payment every year was 217,000, a little bit more than $217,000. But again, there's always those true-upper usage charges because we hire additional staff, do other things with it that we need to pay for. SHI is one of our more frequent vendors that we use. They just, they bid on bids that we put out there. They give us quotes, and those quotes go through the formal bid process, or they're based on contract pricing as well. During this past year, we also purchased other items from them, amounting to a little bit over $38,000. For example, went through a bid process, we got quotes for replacement wireless access points, for our backup software solution, and for some network cables, just little smaller purchases here and there. With those purchases combined with the true-up charges, it's went over the $65,000. Honestly, in past years, it just hasn't amounted to such a larger number, just, but everything in the economy is getting more expensive, so it just made things a little bit more expensive this past year. So we have, what do we say, $38,000, a little bit over $38,000 in other costs, plus the $36,000 past paid true-up charges and usage charges during this past year. It was three or four weeks ago, we got another invoice from SHI for additional true-up charges for licensing and then for some other usage charges in the past few months. And honestly, I was mentioned to the event, just this afternoon, I got another invoice from SHI on top of this for more true-up charges, usage charges for Microsoft Azure. So those aren't even accounted for here quite clearly.
And if I may, Madam Mayor, Mr. Twigger, you know, as long as we're discussing this item, it may be a good idea to introduce that amount into the record as well. So maybe the commission would consider amending the number with that additional true-up charges.
Honestly, if you'd be so kind, I would appreciate if we could amend it to, the bill today was like $33,815 and change, and I would rather be cautious in case we get another one for September usage, which would be great. And if we could just amend it by, what is that, like $8,000, that should cover, anticipating it should cover anything else that we might get between now and the end of the fiscal year for those usage charges. Commissioner Bolton, are there any other questions that I can help with?
Thank you, James. So we have an agreement with this company. Yes?
Yes, so the agreement is with Microsoft, but we purchase it through the vendor who is on the state contract.
Okay, so, so we don't have to have a contract with the actual vendor?
The contract isn't with SHI. They go through the process to submit a quote. There's other certifications and affidavits that we do get at the time with SHI per purchasing policies and procedures, but the agreement was with Microsoft.
Okay, so explain that for us, City Attorney. The agreement is with Microsoft, but we have this agreement, we do the, the vendor itself, sorry, attorney, the vendor itself is a different company. So how is it that we are doing business with a vendor that we don't have a contract with?
If I may?
It's a legal question.
Yeah. I mean, in general, if we're doing business with a vendor, we have to have some form of agreement with the vendor. So that's, that's general. I don't know if there's a license agreement involved in this case because, you know, I wasn't involved in the negotiation or details of this contract.
Okay, so, so Manager, this is where I ask you if we have an agreement with the particular vendor or not, because I was told that through the finance director on other projects, that you cannot have a vendor here, a vendor there, and for the purpose of having one vendor use another vendor. So let me understand and be completely transparent on the record, why we're doing business with a sub-vendor that we don't have a contract with, even though we have a contract with Microsoft? Because Microsoft is not who we are doing business with, we're doing business with SHI.
Right, so Microsoft, in their trade agreements with the state, under the state contract, designated SHI as their agent in the state for their licensing purposes. So when we deal with SHI as the Microsoft's agent to process these licensing agreements, we're actually executing Microsoft documents and not SHI documents, because our agreement is with Microsoft, and that's, you know, processed through SHI as their agent.
No, but we're, we're doing business with SHI. SHI is a company that has an EIN that is separate from Microsoft, two different companies. We do not have a contract with SHI. We have a contract with Microsoft. So you can't tell me to pass an agreement for SHI where there's no agreement with SHI.
So if I may, the business that we're doing directly with SHI today is, is in the amount of $74,742. That's the business that we're doing with SHI, and that's why we're bringing this to the commission, so we can ratify anything over that $65,000.
That would be under your threshold.
Under, above the threshold, correct. So that's the business we're conducting with SHI directly.
Correct, but it's, and I understand that there was a bid process. Did we secure other quotes? Show me the quotes.
So going back to October 2022?
Because you have to follow your own procurement code.
This contract is pursuant to the state of Florida contract, the NASBO agreement. And just to go back, and we could always do an actual bid process, but it would not be to our advantage. Because our numbers are so low, we would have higher costs at that point.
But the procurement code says that when you are getting these, these amounts of, when you're entering into agreement or paying these amount of monies, you must have more than one quote. That is your own procurement procedure. You can't come with a procurement procedure for other things, and then this, just expect that we're going to blindly pass this. I don't care about the other four, but I read everything. So tell, show me the, show me the bids, show me the quotes.
I can't give the specific technical details, Christine can, but according to procurement code, we can also leverage contract vehicles, which are competitive bid contracts.
Really?
Let me just add one thing.
That's not what I was told for other contracts.
I mentioned that we have the renewal coming up in October, right? We're not going through a bid process, like you're getting quotes, but, well, a formal bid process, but in anticipation of that, what I also do is reach out to other Microsoft partners, other resellers, to have them also provide us with quotes based on other contract vehicles. And I can tell you, for the few that I have.
James, let's correct the record. You, I think you indicated this is a piggyback, correct?
It is.
So you don't need quotes.
So then that changes the conversation. No, nobody puts, nobody placed a piggyback in this backup. I don't, I don't see it. So when I'm going through the agenda, and by the way, I don't go through the agenda with the manager, I go through the agenda by myself, and if I have questions, I ask other professionals outside. So when you're bringing items like this, you've got to come with the history and the background information. You can't just tell us that this is a piggyback and not put it in a backup.
Commissioner, on page two of the memo, it doesn't say that we're piggyback.
Of the last, of the last three years, how many, how many, how many budget amendments have you done?
We haven't done budget amendments for this. This is not a budget amendment.
So you've not done a budget amendment for SHI in the past?
I'm wondering if you mean true-up instead of budget amendment.
Well, if I may, so today, we're not bringing.
I'm not talking about today, I'm talking about in the past three years. Have we done a budget amendment for this particular vendor two years ago, three years ago, four years ago, since the start of the agreement?
We may have, but it's not related to the licensing agreement with Microsoft. So SHI, as I said, all that information is provided as a backup, but, but today, the business in front of the City Commission is the consideration for this.
No, I want to know.
$74,000 and nothing else.
Yeah, I want to know if in the past, we've done an amendment, a budget amendment, or ratifying prior purchases.
We may have, yeah.
Well, not, not for Microsoft licensing. We do always budget for usage charges and true-up, well, honestly, for usage charges and potential increases. There hasn't been a budget amendment related to this at all, a budget amendment.
In the past?
In the past, and we haven't, we have ratified, came to the commission to ratify other things as well.
Stick a pin, because how I, how I do my research is that I go back to agendas, and I just do a key, a keyword search for the vendor, and in the past, I've not seen this vendor come to us for ratification. I've not seen it. So I'd like to know when the ratification came in the past.
If you haven't found it, there wouldn't have been ratification because the total aggregate charges would have.
I want you to tell me whether or not there was a ratification or not.
To the best of my recollection, there hasn't been, because we haven't exceeded $65,000 with that vendor.
You're telling me that you have not exceeded $65,000, but in 2024, on, on October 31st of 2024, the city, the city spent with that vendor $124,643.08, and this was not in the backup. I had to ask for the information. So if you did not have a ratification at that point, then that means the city manager is spending over his authority. So what is the accurate answer?
Commissioner, what was the, the content of that item? It probably was approved by the city commission.
Your staff provided the information. This vendor has received $292,222.80 since, since 2024 to present.
And of that $217,000 that's related to the EA agreement, which was approved by the commission resolution in 2022.
$292,222.80, that's what we've, that's what was spent.
We can definitely provide you with all the backup or the information that you're asking for, but this, this vendor, under this contract, will be receiving somewhere around $600,000 over the, you know, three years, the term of the contract. But that's a different.
Yeah, because we're spending time on a budget for $5,000 printing items when there's expenses for $292,222.80. We spent one hour on a $5,000 item when we have $292,222 here being spent. And might I add, you know, you know, the detractors for me may not think that this, oh, I'm bringing something because it's not coming from somebody else, but I read. I'm not going to vote on something that is not clearly stated in the backup. This is a wonderful program, you're a wonderful employee, you do absolutely wonderful job, but this is a finance issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. SHI is a reseller of Microsoft product, right?
Right, they're a Microsoft partner and a software reseller.
When you pay SHI, you're using the cloud? Is it, is it a cloud software that you're using for storage? What service are they running there?
We have Microsoft licensing for Windows desktops, Windows server licensing, SQL Server Licensing Exchange, there's Office 65 subscriptions, there's usage charges for SharePoint Online, there's Azure usage charges, there's quite a lot of different things.
So I know the technology world, when you're a reseller, the company kind of gives you the right to sell their product at a discounted price.
Right, to my knowledge, we can't actually contract with Microsoft directly. You have to go through a software reseller, just like with Amazon, you have to go through other software resellers as well.
Okay, so you can't go online and sign up for Microsoft Azure, like, like the, in the small business world, we can go online and pay for Amazon.
You can go online to a small business and do it, but to my knowledge, they usually direct you to a partner. There's other partners that we can go through, but this was the state contract partner that had the best pricing.
So they direct you to a partner, which is SHI, a reseller of Microsoft in your specific region, and then they provided you with the pricing?
Yes.
For the specific Microsoft product?
Yes.
So you're paying them directly?
We have to pay SHI, who then remits payment to Microsoft, and I'm sure they have their own cut of, cut of that too.
Because I know sometimes in the technology world, you'll be a reseller of a product, but you, you'll pay the company directly, but the company kind of would pay you like a, as a reseller, they'll pay you a percentage.
We do have other contracts that are directly with software companies. Ones that allow it, this one you have to go through the reseller.
So this one, you pay directly to SHI?
Yep.
But we don't, Commissioner Bolton's point, we don't have a contract with SHI?
I'm not sure how to respond to that.
City Manager?
Yes, SHI is, is a, is an, is an entity in the contract as a designated agent or reseller of Microsoft product.
Of Microsoft software.
Microsoft software, services, products and services.
The contract is with Microsoft, and Microsoft designate SHI as the authorized distributor of that contract.
Right.
Just, just want a clarification, because I'm in the technology world, I know sometimes with the modern technologies, marquee in how to operate, and then, not in a marquee way, in a bad way, but I meant just with these new technologies and these new relationships, the contracts are kind of different. So SHI is a reseller of Microsoft.
Yes.
And Microsoft designate SHI as a local reseller.
There are other local resellers available?
Okay.
This one has the most favorite, most, the best pricing.
Okay, so just like how I go to any, a local company that would direct me to like a local reseller, like if I go buy blinds, three-day blinds or whatever, they'll send me to a local person like based in Tamrac?
I think what you're referring to is like Microsoft partners, which there are more, that you can go for services, excuse me, to help you with professional services type things. But for reselling the software, there may be local, smaller companies that can do it, but again.
No, I'm just talking in layman's terms, so we can understand how the contract is structured. As a reseller, SHI is authorized to resell Microsoft product.
That's correct.
And that's coming from the state, that's piggyback from the states, because the state authorized SHI as a company.
Yes, the state goes out to bid, gets different bids from different resellers, and this one's the best pricing.
This one was the cheapest reseller of the Microsoft product. Okay, just want a clarification.
Can I point a clarification? Is this like Amazon?
Yes.
Okay, so we're talking about going shopping on Amazon?
No.
But, well, it is. Amazon has a list of people that they're allowed to sell items for, and they find the best prices, and you select it.
No, it's, it's a little more than that.
Amazon, Amazon has, Amazon Web Services, and this is Microsoft.
Yeah, if I mistake, it's Amazon Web Services.
Where it's the pass-through.
No, no, Amazon would be Michelle J. Gomez store, you would sell on Amazon, and Amazon would pay you a percentage of what Michelle J. Gomez store sells. So it's a little different in the way it's operating. It's a resellers agreement, which in the technology world, you, you, you sell a product, but you're authorized to sell it as a distributor, kind of like, yeah, the company's.
There's a number of them out there that you have to buy through reseller, you don't have a choice about it.
You have to buy it through the reseller. You can't go directly to the company, because they've allocated the reseller to sell that product to, is it enterprise or government entities?
I'm sorry, can you ask that question again?
Is it enterprise that designated to sell to government entities, enterprise? Why this specific company? Why not someone else?
At the time, in October 2022, this contract was the most cost advantageous. This is Microsoft's highest level pricing, it's a little more technical, it's called Level D pricing. It's only available to state, federal, and local governments and education institutions in the United States. That's the highest level discounting you can get, and to go through this reseller on that contract that the state already bid out, that's the avenue to get there.
What if you want to change from Microsoft to Oracle? Is it the same process?
I'm not familiar with Oracle.
But it, it would be, um, a similar process. Oracle's state contract may be represented by another entity. So in this case, S H I provides no services or products from Microsoft to this, to the city of Tamarack. Our, our dealings are entirely with the, uh, Microsoft itself. So they're just simply, um, pushing paper between the city of Tamarack and Microsoft, uh, in, in, um, in, in, in providing these, um, products and services.
Okay, so, so, it should, does S H I sell other products other than Microsoft?
They do, and they, they do a number of, and they represent a number of other, um, contract, um, uh, contracts in the, in the state of Florida, so they're, um, they're one of the, the largest resellers. And, but their, 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 um, arrangement may not be exactly the same, uh, for other products. In the case of Microsoft, they provide zero services. But if we buy other, um, products, like, uh, the, the seventy-four thousand dollars worth, which is what's in front of you today, um, they may still be under some sort of state contract pricing, but directly sold by S H I. And that's why we're dealing with S H I in that instance. And, and so that's why we're bringing it to, you know, to the commission for, for approval.
So it's kinda like the car dealership model. Ford sells cars, but you have to go to this local Ford dealer. Whereas Tesla sells cars all across directly to the consumer, and you don't have to go through that old model of going through a reseller. Whereas how this is structured, this is going through a reseller model, kinda like similar to your local car company.
It, it, it is, but, um, this is more, um, uh, like the Tesla model, except that there is, uh, S H I, uh, somewhere in the, uh, local, um.
But Tes- Tes- Tesla's directly to the consumer. So Tesla kinda revolutionized that, because the states had a rule before we had to go to a, a local dealership. You're saying that they're reselling, so you're telling me that my, the contractor's at Microsoft, but I have to go, I have to go through S H I because they're designated in the state of Florida to be the reseller? And out of all the resellers, they were the lowest, is that correct?
In October twenty-two, they were the lowest.
They were the lowest at that time?
Yes.
And we're getting these charges based on the use of the servers? What's, what, what, what's up with the up charges?
It's a mix of things. So it's usage charges from Microsoft Azure. We've had to add additional space to SharePoint Online, which is where we store basically all over a thousand folders for the city. There's been additional, a few new hires, there's also been additional other third parties. There's other technical limitations of a, of a license for Office fifty-five subscription, where you have to have dedicated ones for certain email accounts. There's just a mix of things that contributes to this.
And, and if, if I may, um, you know, I don't wanna get too much in the, in the weeds, but, but at the same time, there was a time where Microsoft dealt directly with the, um, with, with its customers, uh, for, for, for their products and services. And, um, that model disappeared for a lot of these vendors. And, and so instead of having their own field, uh, staffing and field offices and, and field resources, they chose to, uh, work with these kinds of, uh, larger resellers and, and, uh, and getting their products out there. So, um, and that's the model that they, they chose. And, and they chose, um, they, they're working with S H I, uh, for the, for the, um, uh, reselling of their licenses and, and products and services in the state of Florida under that contract.
Because at the end of the day, the product is Microsoft product, you're not really dealing with S H I. The Microsoft is who runs the servers, who runs the emails and all that stuff. S H I is like a sales team, that's, they're just a salesperson, like the sales teams that's go and selling the product.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Patterson.
No, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I, you know, I've got a number of questions, only because the way that the item is structured is not clear. Are we or are we not in an interlocal agreement with Southwest Ranches?
We are.
So help me, help me understand what that represents versus this twenty-twenty-two transaction?
Right, so we provide I T services to Southwest Ranches, and then we, we charge them a fixed monthly fee plus expenses, materials and, and other products. In, um, in, in providing these services, we also sign them up with the Microsoft, uh, licenses and products and services. And, and so instead of, uh, having a separate Microsoft agreement, we incorporate them into our own contract, uh, and, and, um, under separate designation, but under our, uh, Microsoft, uh, licensing agreement, uh, which is designated in that, uh, original approval. And, um, we pass along the, the charge to, um, uh, Southwest Ranches plus a, um,
Fifteen percent.
A, a markup, fifty percent?
Fifteen.
Fifteen percent, right.
Where, okay, so is the city receiving a revenue from Southwest Ranches?
We are, yes, about, uh, two thousand dollars a month.
Two thousand dollars a month?
It's more than that. I don't know that number off the top of my head. It's twenty-eight hundred or more per month right now for just I T services. And then whenever they have, whenever we get to this point in the year, when we get the, usually it's in October, we get the large annual bill for the annual payment. We break out that between us and them, and they pay somewhere around twenty-something thousand dollars to us for their share.
So we're the holder of the license?
Correct.
Yes. They wouldn't be able to have their own agreement with their quantity. They have to have at least fifty or above to have their own agreement with Microsoft.
Okay, so, again, there's a lot of language in here, and it's really just not, it's not, it's not clear. And I, I've kinda been making the same complaint about the way the backup is presented. Um, it, it's just not clear. Um, with, so on page five of the memo, it, it, it says that you guys are looking to true up forty-two thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five with addition, with the addition of other purchases in the amount of thirty-eight, five. So that's almost a total of like eighty-seven thousand dollars for, for what? What are we truing up exactly? You said staff, there's no, there's no specificity around the request. Um, and I think, you know, the discussion, while I am okay with whatever it is that the staff needs in order to be able to do their job, you know, when we put items on the agenda, especially on a consent agenda, a consent agenda, it needs to be clear, what are we voting on? Are you guys saying that the number is two hundred and ninety-something thousand in the agreement? And we're short eighty-seven thousand dollars that we need to true up? Or we had additional expenses beyond the threshold in the, in the non-contract? Can you see where the concerns and the questions are, Commissioner?
And, and I, I do understand where you're coming from, and, and, um, if I can just, um, you know, um, we, we try to clean it up a little bit, and, and, um, I, I guess, um, it needs further clarification. So today, the only numbers that, that we're, uh, presenting, or we should be presenting, is, um, that's seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Um, and then that's the, um, the, the, that's the number that we're asking for approval. And, and that amount is outside of all the two hundred thousand dollar annual, um, agreement with Microsoft. This is our expenditure with S H I. So we spent about thirty-six thousand dollars in, in, uh, what those true-up costs mean is that during the year, throughout the year, we use licenses. We add, uh, additional licenses, we add additional hardware sometimes, we add, uh, additional positions, and they all require licenses. And when we need those licenses, we can add them, and, and they don't charge us at that point. But at the end of the year, they want us to true up for the additional licenses that we use, whatever the product may be. And that's the, um, the amount. And not just licenses, but also the cloud services that we use with them. Um, those charges, they, they come in, um, at a time that, that they, um, uh, they, they bill us. And, and so, um, between the, the amounts of normal, um, I T supplies that we purchased from them, which was thirty-eight thousand dollars in the first bullet, and the true-up charges, thirty-six thousand dollars, were, were about six thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars over my threshold of sixty-five thousand dollars. And that's the only item in front of the city commission today. So maybe we shouldn't have provided any of the other, uh, backup, uh, you know? Right? Because it's, it's, um, you know, too much information sometimes, it's too much information.
So what's the annual amount for this contract? Or for this agreement, for this service, or whatever it is?
If, if you go back one, um, you know, Jim, you have that, um, right, so.
It's a little bit over two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. It's the required payment.
Six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, um, for the, for the to- it's a total three-year, two-seventeen annually. Right?
Yes, that agreement requires us to pay that, and that agreement from, that we had approved back then also requires us to pay for these other usage charges.
So all, so with the true-up charges, it's really in excess of seven hundred and some, seven hundred-plus thousand dollars?
Yes.
When's the last time we evaluated our I L A with Southwest Ranches? Is twenty-eight hundred dollars fair for the services that we're providing?
Right, so, um, this is a, is a fixed amount. Whatever true-up charges or, or license charges that, that we, um, we have, uh, we bill them, uh, for, because those are known quantities. If they have twenty licenses, thirty licenses, we bill them for, for those exact charges. And, and, and so that part is, is pretty clear in the contract and, and, uh, and what they use. So there's no, um, um.
So they don't have additional users or anything?
If they do, if they do, they, they, uh, they all, they're also part of that, uh, true-up, uh, process, and then we bill them for that.
Right, but I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, if we're, if we're spending about three hundred thousand dollars a year, and we're providing services to another municipality, that we entered, and we entered into that agreement in twenty-thirteen.
Right.
I guess my direct question is, when's the last time we evaluated the structure? And when's the last time we, um, assessed whether or not the payment structure is fair?
We, we continuously assess that, um, if, if I may, and, and, uh, so we do that by, um, by a couple of ways. One, we do have a fixed, uh, annual increase. And then on top of that, we always look at the, um, the number of service calls that we have with, uh, Southwest Ranches. We look at the number of service calls, and we look at the, the amount of billing, and we look at the services that we provide, and make sure that, that we're still aligned, um, with, with our, um, you know, um, I don't wanna say profitability, but, but, uh, that, that, that agreement still makes sense for, for, uh, for the city of Tamarack, for both entities. But we, we look at, um, how many service calls that they, um, that they incurred every month, and then we look at the charges. We wanna make sure that, that we're, um, what we're charging them covers that and, and beyond, uh, for, for, uh, for this commitment.
Um, I, I mean, I, I guess my, my main, my main concern is if we have an interlocal by which we're providing a service at a fixed rate, our true-up costs are not fixed.
Those, those would be charged additionally with the fifteen percent markup, those true-up charges, on top of the, the, their fixed payments.
Understood, I guess, but what I'm saying though is that we're, we're being asked to modify or true up or amend whatever was allocated for this agreement. I know that we have a number of these service-related contracts with ci- cities around us. I've, I've had concerns, and I have concern here, that, you know, I don't know what the services are relating to what we're, you know, what we're providing them. But I have concerns, i- is it, does it require a full, a, a full body? Who's, you know, how much time? Is a fixed rate for those services adequate? Given consideration to what the city is incurring in terms of expenditures for this licensing agreement? So while I understand what's currently in place, there are questions around whether or not we are, you know, that the relationship between the two cities is fair in terms of whatever even our staff is having to do to provide those services, if there are services outside of just access to the license agreement. Um, so I just wanted to put that here, because this backup would have never told me that we are, you know, it's, it mentions in I L A, it doesn't mention revenues, there's no real clarity around how this is drafted. Um, so I just wanna put that on the record. I think it's important that we evaluate whatever we did in twenty-thirteen. If it is calling for just an annual fixed increase, I think we might need to look at that, uh, and reconsider that, especially given consideration to the fact that we're spending in excess of three hundred thousand dollars a year. Thank you.
City attorney, is this agreement or arrangement, however way I wanna put it, legal?
Well, uh, based on, I don't have the agreement in front of me. Obviously, if the city can piggyback off state contracts, and, and, uh, uh, piggyback is legal in Florida. So with respect, obviously, there's been a course of dealing over the years between the city and S H I, uh, which, uh, payments has been made pursuant to some form of contract. I don't have that contract, but it's been approved, budgeted, I assume, the past couple of years and approved by the commission. And, uh, just to paraphrase the manager, there's payments been made, that's been budgeted. Only issue is, uh, the budget amount has been exceeded, and they need commission approval for that amount. Okay?
Okay, that was a really long answer to a quick question. I just wanted, yes, as you are the city attorney, that you are aware that the three-year contract that we are under that ends at the end of October of this year, we're doing everything legal, correct?
From a standpoint, yes.
Oh, okay, good, because if you're not gonna say yes, we have a really big problem, don't you think?
Well, uh, you know, the manager, what is, if, if, if it wasn't presented to me, I can't give you a response. But based on the fact that the I T director indicated it was a piggyback contract, and which was, uh, they operated under, and, and piggyback is legal.
All right. Ms. Trigger, what happens if we don't approve this non-pro-tongue, cause we've already spent the money, for at least part of it, the sixty-five, eighty, not to mention whatever additional monies were being asked for to make this approximately eight thousand dollars? What happens?
I would imagine that S H I would eventually send us to collections, cause it would be a breach of the Microsoft agreement that we had approved back in twenty-twenty-two.
You really need to speak in the mic, so for those of you who did not hear him, don't repeat it.
What's that? It's on, yes, I'm sorry, I'm just.
I'm a little tired, just get a little closer, don't be shy.
So I said that, um, you know, the, I would imagine that we would be in breach of the Microsoft agreement that was approved by this city back in twenty-twenty-two, and that eventually S H I would go to collections with us.
All right, thank you. Um, city manager, the agreement between Southwest Ranches, is that within your purview?
It is, but it was, um, originally approved by a city commissioner as well.
And you said that you do review it every year?
It's actually, uh, one of our performance measures, uh, on a monthly basis. We, 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 uh, keep track of the service records, how much time we spent with them, how many service calls was, um, you know, received, and, and what we've done exactly. And, and so we look at the hours spent, and we look at the charges. We wanna make sure that it's, it's aligned.
So you are making sure that we are being reimbursed a significant, the actual amount, and then possibly then some, in order to cover costs and expenses and time?
It's one of the department's performance measures.
Yeah, we have about ten to fifteen service quests at most per month from Southwest Ranches. That's out of about six hundred or so service quests we get per month overall.
And that's separate and apart from what we're talking about?
That's separate apart from this, and then there's other things like trip charges or other special projects that get billed for if there were any that's separate from this. And then we also review, we do that monthly, but then we review the charges, what our annual fees are when we raise them, about six months before that hits, so we can give time if we need to raise them to make them aware too, or the agreement goes away.
Sounds good. Um, and basically though, for whatever we are charging or being charged on behalf of Southwest Ranches, because it's their twenty computers, they're paying for. They're paying their hard costs?
It gets billed back to them at a fifty percent markup.
And the reason we're so much more expensive is cause we're so much larger?
Yes.
All right. And some of our security items go into the cloud and all these items?
Yes.
So everything when we're expanding our Wi-Fi into parks, and when we're expanding our additional employees and everything that we need for our license plate readers and anything that we're doing, does it go into these things?
Not the Wi-Fi and license plate readers, but a lot of stuff does leverage cloud services.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bolton.
Ms. Goodjus.
Christine Cazures, Director of Financial Services.
City manager.
Um, what makes, what, what makes a vendor unique?
What makes a vendor unique?
Reclaiming my time.
I don't understand.
Like, like this full source provider?
I don't understand the question.
What makes a vendor unique? An E I N, the name of a business, what, what makes them unique?
I guess their name and their E I N would make them unique. Or if they, um, provide just one product that no one else provide, or a service that no one else provide, then that. or a service that no one else provide, then that would make them unique.
So I have a bottle of water from Nestle, and the city wants to do business with Nestle. Nestle says, "I can't enter into an agreement with you, but what you can do is go to Walmart, or you can go to Sam's Club." So the city decides to go to Walmart or Sam's Club. You're going to enter into an agreement with Nestle or Walmart?
Walmart.
Okay. And if you're entering into an agreement with Walmart, it's going to be subject to the procurement code that you have?
Yes.
And it's going to be subject to the sixty-five thousand dollar spending threshold?
Yes.
Okay, so how is this, how is this scenario with S H I set different from Walmart? Educate me.
So what happened with this agreement is that the City Commission approved the agreement with S H I in the amount of six fifty-two, one oh one thirty-six. But part of the...
I thought we said that there's no agreement.
Yes, it was approved by the commission in two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay.
Yes. But a part of the issue here is that there are other services that this vendor provides for the city. Now, these services are small services that doesn't meet the threshold to come to the commission. However, what happened was that at the end of the period, we find that all these smaller services that separate from that agreement adds up to over sixty-five thousand. The amounts...
No, 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 your rule, your rule is not to bring items that accumulate over time. Your responsibility is, the minute it hits sixty-five thousand and one cent, that's when it comes to the City Commission.
Yes.
That's not what happened here.
Yes.
You...
Isn't that what happened, Jim?
Look, very honest, my opinion, our opinion for the past fifteen years has been, the City Commission approves the Microsoft enterprise agreement, which requires those true-up payments to be made. What we've been trying to do over the past, I think, year and a half or so is be, honestly, be more transparent. And when these situations do occur, even though they've been approved by the commission already, just to sort of bring it out there for the aggregate spend so you see that. And that's what this is really trying to do. You know, even though there's those Microsoft, S H I payments through, S H I to Microsoft, just them plus the other things that were through S H I, we're just trying to present that for transparency sake, even though these were really already approved.
Transparency. City Clerk, can you admit the backup that you walked on into the record?
Yes, just add on what Jim says.
City Clerk. Can you please...
Commissioner, I did provide each commission member with a printout, I believe, based on the conversation with Ms. Kudus, is that it's a list of payment to S H I for, I believe, the beginning of the fiscal year, which begins on October first.
But I'm just saying, to formally admit it into the record.
Accept it into the record.
Okay. Manager, how are items routed to your office? Like, for instance, this item, comes from Finance and then comes to the City Manager's office?
It goes through a robbing process from the origin in Department, through Finance, Budget, Risk, and Deputy City Manager, City Attorney, and then comes to my office, yes.
All items or just this one?
All items.
And when it goes to the City Manager's office, does it only go to Maxine, or does it go to other people in the office?
It reaches Deputy City Manager's office, and at that point, if she's not in, then others may see it, but...
Like who? Who's authorized to see?
I believe our administrative staff is allowed to see it, see those items. I, we can look at the system and tell you exactly who has access, but, you know, those items are...
Would it have a footprint of who sees it?
Yes.
Every item?
Every item.
So I can do a records request to see who saw an item at what point?
Yes. It's date and timestamp.
Date and timestamp?
City Manager, if I may, when the items are routed through the agenda, it depends on the routing that is selected. However, for our standardized routing, it goes through Purchasing if it has a contract, and then it goes to Risk to our Assistant City Manager. It starts at the Department, sorry. Then it goes to Purchasing if there is a contract.
And then Finance?
Finance, Risk, the City Manager's office, which is our Deputy City Manager, then our City Attorney, our City Manager, and then it's printed in the City Clerk's office. On that routing, the only individuals that are on there are the individuals that we allow to, we add on the routing. So when it goes to Deputy City Manager on that step, it would be Deputy City Manager Callaway as well as Shawna, as her assistant.
So in the City Manager's office, it's either Ms. Callaway or Shawna?
And then it goes to the City Attorney, and then the City Manager, and the administrative staff, which is Vanessa. Vanessa cannot approve nor Shawna. They can't approve items, but they have the ability to see the item.
What about Tanya?
Tanya is not a part of the routing.
Okay, so only Ms. Callaway and Shawna?
Levend and Vanessa.
No, when it comes to, you said Deputy City Manager?
On the routing for this Assistant City Manager slash Deputy City Manager, it's Ms. Callaway as well as Shawna.
Okay, got it. For the record, tell us what you're asking us to do and add the amount that you were talking about?
Yes, sir. We need to approve, let's see, where's that, ratify...
Next slide, Jim.
Oh, it's on the slides up here. Yeah, we need to ratify the seventy-four thousand dollars, seven forty-two dollars and two cents. And then there's also an invoice that we had already received two or three weeks ago in the amount of six thousand five hundred eighty dollars and sixty-eight cents. That needs to be approved. And then honestly, I would ask that we also authorize another eight thousand dollars for additional invoices that we might get for F Y twenty-five charges, because today, for example, I got yet another true-up invoice from S H I in the amount of...
That's what I'm talking about, so you got more invoices, so add up all of them.
I got one today, and I wouldn't be surprised if I got one for September.
Okay, so add the cost and tell us.
Pardon me?
Add the cost, all of them.
About ninety thousand, Jim?
Well, I mean, ninety thousand, ninety thousand would be enough, but what is it, seventy-four?
Yes.
Seventy-four thousand plus that, that's one eighty-one, plus another nine, so ninety thousand would be fine. Ninety thousand would cover everything plus any additional invoices.
So, okay, so, this is another question, please stop my clock. I'm addressing the mayor. Can we ask for a friendly amendment to change the ninety thousand, to the amount of ninety thousand dollars at the appropriate time? When you do that, I'm going to then ask the City Attorney a question to finish my twelve seconds.
I'm planning on doing that once you finish your twelve seconds. So when you're done with your twelve seconds, I hear that...
So assuming Attorney, we change the amount to ninety thousand dollars. On the record, tell me that this is legal and it's okay to vote yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kudus, you wanted to say something earlier, and you did not get to finish your sentence. Do you wish to?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. City Clerk, be on standby. Commissioner Bolton, do you accept a friendly amendment of raising this price to being ninety thousand dollars? Vice Mayor Daniel, do you second the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. We already know that it's legal, according to the City Attorney. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero as amended.
And you prepared this item, Ms. Kudus?
Okay, no more, we're done, we're done, we're moving to the next item. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much.
We are going on to ordinances on second reading. Eight A, T O two-six-zero-two. City Attorney, read the title for the record, please.
Item eight A, ordinance the City Commission, City of Tamarack, Amendment, Chapter fourteen, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article two, Stop and Stand and Park, Section fourteen-twenty-six, Parking Restriction, Public Right of Way, to Provide a Community-Driven Mechanism to Manage Parking Restriction, Enforcement in the Public Rights of Way Citywide. Amendment, Section fourteen dash thirty-seven, Entitled Parking Violation Enforcement to Provide a Public Education Period to Provide to Administration Enforcement of Ordinance and Off-Street Parking Policy, Providing for Conflict Plan for Effective Date. Thank you.
Thank you, I need a motion and a second, please.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bolton. I have a second by Commissioner Patterson. Ms. Callaway, our Deputy City Manager is here to provide update on the changes requested by the commission, and then some. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the commission, good evening. My name is Maxine Callaway, Deputy City Manager. I just have two slides for you, just to share with you the changes that were made since the first reading. So we were asked to add a number of neighborhoods, which we did. So the list of neighborhoods now with parking restriction or no on-street parking or enforcement of on-street parking is listed on the screen. In addition to that, we were asked to make a change relative to adding, both in the ordinance as well as in the policy, the ability of members of the commission by a majority vote to add or remove neighborhoods from the list. So we have done that, both in the ordinance as well as in the parking policy. In addition to that, we just wanted the policy to be clear that the City Manager Designee had the ability to manage signage as well as the decal program, or well as an application process, so the program can somewhat pay for itself. And so the Manager Designee is able to assign fees associated with that, if he so chooses. And then lastly, we were asked to add a parking decal program in the event there is on-street parking that's being enforced, and there's a visitor that's coming into the community and would like to park on the street, that decal is acquired through the city, and we are aware that that parking is taking place, and we are able to manage that program. So those were the changes that were made since first reading.
Thank you. I'll now open this up for public comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, public comments are now closed. This is now open to the commission. Commissioner Bolton?
Tell me more about the decal program?
If one of the communities that's on the list where parking is being enforced, on-street parking, if there is a need for a visitor or someone to park on that street, then on a temporary basis, so someone comes in, maybe someone from college who is visiting, there's no parking that is permissible, it would allow that individual to get a temporary decal from the Code Compliance Office to be placed on your vehicle, so we know you're able to park on the street temporarily.
Okay. So assuming there's a street with thirty people, thirty houses, and over the Christmas holiday, all the grandchildren comes from Boston and Spain and the Virgin Islands and Haiti and Jamaica, and the thirty people want to park on the street, they come to the community development, the zoning parking enforcement, they get a parking decal, and for two weeks in Christmas, fire trucks cannot get through, because everybody parks on the street and it's perfectly legal.
No, it wouldn't be, Commissioner. I think we would assess who a decal is given to. We determine the width, the nature of the street, because in the ordinance, it also says that no blocking of emergency vehicles can occur. So I'm certain we would not be giving out thirty decals that would block the streets and not allow the passage of emergency vehicles.
But what's the safeguard for, you know, my neighbor got a parking decal, and here you are telling me that I can't get a decal?
Yeah, it's just based on first come, first available, and whether or not it's appropriate on the street.
Is that written in the policy?
First come, first available, it's at the discretion. So the discretion is written in the policy, yes. So we'd conduct the assessment, make sure it's viable for that to occur, to issue the decal. It was at the recommendation of Commissioner Patterson, and I believe consensus was achieved, so we included it.
Okay, no problem.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. And to that same point, I did want to just kind of go through some of the changes relative to that same point. While I do agree through the manager, Ms. Callaway, that there needs to be an exception for folks that, you know, do need to be able to park from time to time. I think the provision currently states that the decal is valid for a period of twelve months. So I think we might need to revise that. It needs to be a little bit more shorter term in nature.
Okay, did it say up to, or it just said...
Here it says decal shall be valid for a period of twelve months, according to the provision that you guys just provided.
Okay.
I think, you know, and then additionally, there's another place here where it says up to two, up to two decals may be issued. So to the Commissioner's point, I do think we might want to reconsider that. You know, while we may, you know, obviously, we want to be able to provide for some access and consideration around additional vehicles when needed. I don't know that we're going to be, especially, I think maybe there needs to be some some consideration for neighborhoods that maybe can't support two on-street cars. You know, I think that might need to be kind of another variable that we just evaluate on a case-by-case basis as to, you know, essentially not congest the streets and, you know, find ourselves kind of back at the root cause of the whole policy in the first place. And then I think the last comment I had, perhaps one second. Yeah, so I guess my thought when I was reviewing this earlier was, I mean, there could be a circumstance where maybe there is... I think we need to kind of delineate short-term basis versus a home that has a third vehicle or a college kid that lives at home, maybe, I don't know, whatever the circumstance is, and they need to park on the street. Are we, you know, so are we saying that if you have three cars, you can get an exception to park with a decal on a long-term basis? Because it seems like that's probably how you guys drafted this, that, you know, there is a consideration for someone that has an additional vehicle and space is not readily available on the property, so you can get a long-term parking pass?
No, that was not a consideration, which is why we call it temporary. And we said, we're missing the word up to twelve months, but it's meant to be temporary in nature for visitation. That's how we understood the discussion that happened on the first reading.
Yeah, so, well, it doesn't say up, it says valid for a period of twelve months and must be renewed annually through reapplication and verification of residency, which gives to me, basically, if I read that and I have four cars, this tells me I can come to the city and come get a decal and park on a long-term basis and just get a new decal once a year.
Yeah.
And I'm not necessarily, yeah, and so I just want to just raise that because I think it's a little different from, you know, what you were responding to the Commissioner about and what's actually drafted. So I think we might need to kind of just, you know, give some consideration to the difference between permanent and long-term. None of my neighborhoods are on the list, so, you know, that would defer to, you know, my colleagues on what their preference would be around that provision. But I do think that we need to just differentiate between the two, thank you.
All right, we'll make the changes to make sure it's clear that it's meant to be temporary in nature for a shorter period of time than twelve months.
Okay, I'll just go in order. I don't like section four, section two, four, A four, having it on the street, restrictions may be imposed or lifted as determined by a majority vote of the commission. I think it opens up to politics. If a community comes to us with their fifty-five petition, they're supposed to be allowed, whether they want to remove it or take it. So bringing it to us to then say, hey, I feel like removing this community defeats the purpose of having them go out and do things. So I'm not in favor of that. I really still believe that if a community within, say, six months of this item comes forward and says, "My rules say in my community that we don't allow parking", that's what should be allowed to be included on the no parking or parking. What happens to those communities that have agreements in place with you? Those just already get assumed in? There are communities that have agreements in place. There are communities that have agreements in place for no parking being enforced?
Yes, we have a few agreements, I think seven or eight that the city commission has approved that has enforcement mechanism through their community, so we would honor those agreements.
They've come before this commission?
Yes.
Okay. We have on section three D, there's a six-month period of public education. Are we still planning on another six months of public education on this?
That was our intent, unless this commission would like to see something else.
So we continually do six months of education, non-enforcement, and we continually change the rules of the road almost every six months, so we never really enforce anything. Okay. I agree with my colleagues regarding the decal program. I'm sorry, I don't remember where we agreed to this, to be created now and put in. It was maybe a thought to be discussed, but not as, let's add it in, as it was an approved item for all of us. The fact that we're going to say, or the city manager's going to say, was approved, what about the HOA and COAs, if they have rules against this? You're going, we're going to override them and give them decals? Right. We are saying that it's in place and that's a park, but the way it's written does not give any deference to an association that may have an agreement with the city that says not to. If it's an agreement with the city for enforcement, they don't have the right to make that change. Also, it does say up to two decals. It does seem very open for how it's going to be enforced. The decals to be valid for a period of twelve months, must be renewed, does leave it very wide open, which means you can just say to any association that is fifty-five-plus people saying, don't do this, do you, the city just allowing it to happen?
Mayor, we can definitely make some changes as recommended by the commissioner, so...
So why should this decal program be put in here now for voting? And why shouldn't this decal program be brought back when it can be fully discussed at another time? Because it also has reapplication, verification of residences. Commissioner Patterson brought up good points. If it's just a child who's now living at home, there are certain things that have not been brainstormed through this to make this fully baked. As you know, I like my cakes baked and I am not comfortable...
Mayor, we can take the direction now, it's a policy, so we can take the direction...
Flesh it, but it's not allowing, flesh it, sneezing at the truth, as Grandma would say. It doesn't allow for the full impart right now of being able to think this through by making changes on the fly. Making changes on the fly, I think, is what led to some of this. So I personally can't support the decal program as it is written. Also, I believe there was a request for mainland, Tamarack Lakes one and two and mainland's five and six, and I do not see them in here.
I'm sorry, Tamarack?
Lakes one and two and mainland's five and six. Seeing no other questions or comments, city clerk?
Was there?
No, there wasn't until you just pressed it. So, okay, Commissioner Bolton, go ahead. Get on the ball there, buddy. It's nine fifteen. Need a break?
All right. There was no consideration for mainland's six and there was no consideration for Tamarack Lakes one and two. We did say at the last meeting to change Tamarack Lakes north to Tamarack Lakes south. That's what we agreed on. Secondly, the decal program is great, but I think it should not be twelve months, it should be seasonal. Can you stop my time, Kim, Madam Clerk? I appreciate you. Thank you.
Aren't you talking?
So you got it, Ms. Callaway?
I apologize.
So I'm just giving ideas for you, for you to get consensus for. So you, you got that part.
Okay, so am I waiting for consensus on Tamarack Lakes one and two and mainland's five and six?
It's not a consideration, it's not in the list.
Well, go ahead.
What, what else, Ms. Callaway?
And then the changes for the decal program, if I can get some direction, if that's a desire of the commission to make those changes.
Also, the, the idea of the majority commission was a consideration at the last meeting. We already got consensus for that, but what, the signatures, isn't that in tandem with the majority of the commission?
That was not the understanding. You can be added to the list with the...
I'm saying, you can be added to the list or lifted from the list by a majority vote of the commission or the petition.
The signatures were already there, yes. So the petition was already there.
So it was not taken out?
So the petition is already there. You can be added with fifty-five percent. You can remove your neighborhood with fifty-five percent and then at the last meeting, the request was made, or you can be added or removed by majority vote of the commission.
Right, so it's or. So the safeguard is already there, so it's not political.
So there are three options available, yes.
Yeah, so, you know, how, how does it become political? If a, if a community that, of elders, elderly community of sixty-plus, fifty-five-plus community, they can't walk, some of them can't come out of their house, but they have the, this issue in their community and they call their representative, a member of Greenhaven, let's say, call their representative, oh, can you please, they're parking on the street, that's the stuff, and I love the residents of Greenhaven, I knocked on all of their doors three times, right? So why can't they bring it up to their representative and why can't that representative bring it to the commission for a majority vote? How's that political? Appine. I'm asking for your opinion.
She's not the one who gave that opinion, it was me.
Yeah, I'm telling you to, I'm asking you if you can appine. Like, do you think it's political or not? Or do you think it's good policy?
Commissioner, the item, as you said, received consensus the last time when it was voted on and we included it in the policy as such.
Very well. Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Esquire, I appreciate you. Okay, that's it.
Commissioner, right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I see Greenhaven, Sunset Isle, so those were added, thank you very much. The decal program, up to twelve months, is it going to Commissioner Bolton's point and then Commissioner Patterson's point? Shouldn't there be an option for like long-term residents and guest residents? What if someone visited for a short time and you want to give them, how is that going to be administered? Out of some, some like apartment complexes, you can give a decal up to fourteen days? You have to like put it in every, 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 you could put it in every other day or whatever, but it equates like fourteen days. How, how would that decal program work for long-term residents and for, for short-term guests?
Well, what we heard at the last meeting, it was meant to be temporary and I do agree, perhaps twelve months is a little bit too much, so we can do up to six months, we can do up to one month for renewal option. We can certainly entertain that. If there is no on-street parking, I think it should remain that way and perhaps not have a permanent option available, since the community has already determined that they want on-street parking enforced. Then to have a permanent option, I think, might create issues if that community has already designated and said they want no on-street parking. I think a temporary solution is something that's a bit more viable, because you might have visitors, people that are coming in, but to have parking be permanent is somewhat flies in the face of the community already asking for no on-street parking to be permissible. So now we have a permanent solution. It's just pilot, you know, it's...
And it's up to two cars, right? Two? Up to how many cars per, it's two?
Yes, but, yeah, but we're gonna, I think the commissioner pointed that out, so we'll make an adjustment to that.
Okay.
So we can adjust that to one car per household as available, first come, first serve as available, and put some language, so it's clear that it's discretionary, because we want to make sure that there's still no blocking of emergency vehicles.
What if people have people coming in for the holiday season and it's, it's more than one, like family member? Is, are we gonna have leeway in that? Like, say, for instance, someone...
Yeah, I mean, if you're doing a party and I think this commission discussed that, if you're having an event and you're not doing a party and it's something for that night.
I'm actually a party, say, you have a, a holiday get-together and your cousin from Atlanta, cousin from New York, cousin from North Carolina drives down and they're staying at the house for three or four days, and they're gonna be all parked on the street. Is there, are we gonna allow, if it's only two cars and people are gonna have more than one car, how, how would that work?
Only two? They would have to carpool. I think if we write the policy to allow one decal per household or to allow two decals per household, I think that's what we'd be implementing.
So here's a good example of how this could be political. I represent the whole city, so I have communities of Tamarack Lakes one and two who said they want it, mainland's five, who already has no on-street parking now, and six. So I want them in, they should be in, but we have somebody saying they shouldn't. Tell me, that's not political? So we have a dilemma right away, don't we? I think that it causes a problem when, if we are saying these communities already have no parking in their communities and whether it's enforced or not has been a problem in our city, hence the reason for us discussing this for almost fifteen years of trying to get a policy together, for we can have enforcement and people cannot feel like they are not going to be able to use their roads or be blocked or not have a place to park or not realize that they only bought a house that only has one parking spot and one driveway. So these are the issues we've been trying to resolve for so long. That's why they want enforcement and that's why they've come to you and asked, can I have an agreement? And some of the communities I've asked you for, for agreements for them, they've still yet to receive. So this is supposed to be helping them not have to go through that agreement process by grandfathering them in. Maybe instead of all these decals, we just have a special, during holidays and lists during holidays and say during these time periods, parking will not be enforced, which was the other problem that we were trying to get away from, because that was a problem. So we're solving some things, we're not solving others. It comes from when we don't get a chance to fully workshop some items together and we just put it on the dais and ask you to figure out what sausage we're trying to make. So I still say Tamarack Lakes one and two, mainland's five and six. Seeing no other comments on, or being called for? This item is...
So was there consensus on the seasonal versus year versus, are we keeping it?
If you want to make a friendly amendment, then please make a friendly amendment. We've got Commissioner Bolton is the one who made the motion and you made the second. What is your friendly amendment, Commissioner Patterson?
I make a friendly amendment to, I don't know, maybe we, maybe we provide for a temporary, so for, for section three, that we provide for a temporary decal with option to renew up to six months.
Or, or maybe it should be a temporary decal that is seasonal, that cannot last more than fourteen days per month.
I don't want you to say... I'd rather what Marlon just said, actually. Surprisingly, right?
But, but it's...
I think that, that's not bad, but I think it just would become difficult on staff to manage it, the fourteen, you know, it could be difficult to interfere with it.
But, but Commissioner, respectfully, if, if there are people that are living in a community that have on-street parking issues and there are two additional, because remember, we have on-street parking issues because there are two people or one or two or three people living in the house that's causing the issue. So if you're going to give them a parking decal for six months, you're essentially legalizing the people who are causing the problem to park on the street. So I'm saying, if we want to give them some relief, they should not be able to park on the street for more than a fourteen-day period within a month, because then it, you, you, you take them off the street, right? So now they can't live there permanently, they now have to live there temporarily. So for the other half of the month, they have to go somewhere else. So that now means you are giving a legal right to people who are parking on the street to people who are truly temporary and not permanent. Because if you just say six months, then those people who are living in the house right now is going to park on the street for six straight months and it's just going to be, and they're going to tell their neighbors, I have a permit, you can't tell me to move for six months. Then what do you do? We come back to the same exact problem that we have. So that's why it should be, so, so, so to your point, it's a, it's a good piece of legislation to put the decal there, but we need to be cautious that we're not legalizing people who are illegal in these, in these communities. So they shouldn't be there. I mean, a leasing community will not give you a parking permit for more than fourteen days. They will not do it in a single month. And that is to safeguard from somebody illegally living in the apartment from staying there.
So do we, so, I mean, do we want to consider...
Illegally living in the apartment, because they're not on the lease.
Do we want to consider...
You've not rented in a while, so you don't know. But the renters know.
Do we want to have two provisions?
But even in a...
One providing for an additional vehicle. So do we want to have two, do we want to, okay, so are we saying we want one provision to allow for temporary parking not to exceed fourteen days? Or do we want to allow for an addition, that plus a provision providing for an additional vehicle that can park for an extended period?
For instance, how park, how communities that, that enforce these things, you know, up to two vehicles cannot park for, for more than fourteen days in the month period. But, but these are small streets, so we can't even say two, two cars. We have to just say probably one car not able to park there for more than fourteen days in a month, in a rolling month.
Procedurally, we are completely out of scope. This is supposed to be a motion second or not, and it sounds like this should be tabled for a workshop instead of continually going back and forth.
You know, I think, I think we're there for the legislation, it's only this piece that just needs to be ironed out.
And that's, that's, Commissioner Bolton, that's a policy and that's coming from the manager office and, and so that can always...
But aren't we passing the policy, right?
Exactly, you have the policy attached to the ordinance.
Yeah, policy can always be, like any other policy, amended as, as we go.
No, the policy is being passed by the city commission, so it cannot be amended by the city manager. If a policy is passed by the city commission, it can't be amended arbitrarily by the city manager. You know, if it's the city manager's policy, then sure, right? So, but it can't be arbit, a, a policy that is passed by the city commission cannot be arbitrarily changed by the manager.
He would obviously come back to the commission if any change.
Yeah, but we don't want it to come back.
Well, I would make a, let me just make the friendly amendment then. So I would say that, I would make a motion to approve the item with the friendly amendment that under subsection three of the decal provision, that decals be valid for a period of fourteen days, not to exceed fourteen days.
In a calender, in a calendar month.
Calendar month?
Yeah.
Should be more than a calendar month, because then you can have somebody, okay, I'm just going away for a two-week, two-week trip, or I've got my neighbor having my car there for a decal for that fourteen days, and then because we have it for so long, I could just switch and swap, because we're just gonna keep sending it over to the city commission, because we don't have a finite on there that you cannot have a person visit for more than, you can't have more than three in a calendar year or something like that.
Because, because you're thinking in terms of a physical decal. What apartments and people are doing now is having people register the cars on, on, on an app.
No, no, I'm not actually thinking about that decal or that kind of process. I'm thinking about people and their cars and what they're gonna do. Hey, we're close, right? You're, you're only a few doors down. Will you put this car on your decal, because you have it fourteen days? They'll go away for the weekend, then they come back to my house for fourteen days. They're... There are two different houses, and they have more than fourteen days. It's-
No, but it's registered-
You can't do that, because the license plate is gonna see that you were in there for fourteen years. A property complex has a license plate.
No, but in this case, a decal is registered to the home, to the property, to the homeowner.
Is it registered to the home, or is it registered to the car?
No, it's gonna be registered to the home.
Exactly, so that car is registered to my home, and then in fourteen days, or the fifteen days, gonna be registered to Commissioner Rice's home.
No, you can't, you can't.
But, where, where do you say it can't? We say it can't. Where does the policy say we can't? That's my problem. The policy is-
They're going to-
It says it's not transferable. The policy says decals are not transferable.
No, I'm gonna apply for a brand-new decal under somebody else's house. Fine, forty-nine ten Woodlands, and guess what? Then I'm sending him over fifty-seven twenty-nine Bayberry.
Yeah, we're not gonna weed out every nuance in this discussion.
But meanwhile, we're also subjecting it to those communities that have asked for enforcement, and we as a commission are overriding those communities that have asked for enforcement. And I don't think that is proper.
No, but we can't be, I mean, Mayor, with all due respect, we, I under- this is, this policy provides for enforcement.
I think we can't, it cannot be perfect, because it will never be perfect, because there's no one set standard situation. So this is just giving leeway for those, if they're having a Christmas party, if they have their kids come over, if they have someone visiting, which really, they might not be registered to the house anyway, because they don't live there. So you have to give leeway, and this is the problem with this parking thing. There's no one set, one set perfect way.
The problem I have is that we haven't actually discussed the details of how to make it one set easy way, or having options. The thing is, we don't have options, and it is wide open as written, even if we knock it down for fourteen days in a twelve-month period or a six-month period. It is still wide open on two cars for the households. It's subject to availability. Who's availability? Who's determined the amount of cars per community that are allowed? Are we gonna be enforced? There's too many open doors on this thing to be able to say that this policy is enforceable, because it's, it's, you can say no all you want. My opinion is that there's not enough restriction on this exception to the restricting of parking on the roadways for those communities that have asked for it. And we are the ones asking the city commi, council, or sorry, city staff to make the decision on opening those exceptions instead of where it should be within the community to make those exceptions, not us. It's an opinion. You have a friendly amendment on the floor. Do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes, just restating the friendly amendment. One car, fourteen days, within thirty days. Right?
That is the friendly amendment.
I accept.
She accepts, obviously, Commissioner Patterson, since you made the friendly amendment, and you're the second, you accept.
Yes.
At this point in time, city clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
May I go first?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes four to one.
Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, it is nine thirty-four, and we're gonna move right along to our last item. We're up to a quasi-judicial hearing. It is TA TR one-four-three-one-zero. City attorney, please read the title for the record, and then share the quasi-judicial rules of the road, and the city clerk will swear in any witnesses.
Yes. Item number ten A, resolution, city commission, city of Tamarack, grant site plan approval with conditions to allow for the development of subject property known as Woodman Pod D, to permit the construction of eight two-story townhouse buildings, contain total fifty dwelling uni, units located on southeast corner of North Pine, Island Road, and South Gate Boulevard, providing for conflicts, providing for effective date. Ground rules are quasi-judicial. All persons testifying before the city commission must be sworn in with regard to judicial items before being considered by the city commission. The petitioner, any effect, shall be given opportunity to present evidence, bank for witness, cross-examine witness. All evidence relied upon by reasonable proven person should be admissible, where such evidence would be admitted in court of law. Here's the evidence may be used for a purpose of supplement, explain other evidence, but it should not be sufficient by itself to support a finding. Statements attorney shall not be considered only as argument, not to be considered as testimony. The commission shall have authority to refuse in here testimony which is irrelevant. Documentary evidence may be pres, presented in the form of a copy, original available upon request. The party should be given opportunity to prepare a copy of the original. All parties should be given opportunity to cross-examine witnesses, question parties about the evidence. Order presentation will be as followed. Uh, the petitioner will present his case first. Uh, staff will then give a presentation if requested. Effective parties will allow to give testimony. Persons who are in support, or in opposition will provide testimony or statements during the public hearing aspect of it. And finally, the city commission shall deliberate on the petition. At this point, no further testimony should be taken, and members of the city commission shall not ask questions of our person presented, presented testimony. At this point, uh, would like to know if there's any expert communication between members of the commission and the applicant, or residents.
Okay, we'll go through your way first, instead. But actually, the city clerk was ready to swear in the witnesses, but Commissioner Patterson, any disclosures?
No.
Commissioner Wright?
No.
I spoke with the applicant attorney and the applicant. Vice Mayor?
I did the same.
Commissioner Bolton?
None.
Okay. City clerk, would you please swear in the witnesses?
All witnesses for this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth and not reveal the truth? Madam Mayor, all witnesses have been sworn in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to the second, please.
Move it. Second.
The item was moved by Commissioner Bolton, the item was seconded by Commissioner Wright. Ms. Christina Belinky is a designated agent for the applicant, and she will deliver the presentation.
All right, good evening. For the record, Christina Belinky of Miskell-Backman. Uh, my address is fourteen southeast fourth street in Boca Raton, and it is a pleasure to be here before you this evening. Um, here on behalf of Woodmont. Most of you are probably very familiar with this property at this point, because it has a longstanding history. Uh, but it is about four-point-three acres, located at the southeast corner of Pine Island Road and South Gate Boulevard. Um, it has a future land use designation now of low-medium residential, and a zoning designation of R-three multifamily residential. Um, and that's because of this long history that started, um, over a decade ago, when I first started my career here in Tamarack. I think everybody's very familiar with the Woodmont golf course redevelopment. Um, Pulte came in and amended, actually, it was, uh, Woodmont that first amended the land use um, for nine holes of their golf course. Uh, they allowed for residential development on the majority of the holes, and this particular area was designated for commercial development at that time. There was a rezoning, uh, corresponding uh, with those applications that provided for B-two zoning. In, I guess most recently, in January of this year, uh, the city commission actually approved a local land use plan amendment to designate the property from commercial to residential, with the allocation of fifty flexibility units, allowing for essentially fifty residential units on the property. Uh, and the property was rezoned from neighborhood commercial to R-three multifamily residential. Um, and that's in line with what we're proposing today. So, we have the site plan located, uh, on your screen here. Um, and I kind of tried to color coordinate it to make it a little bit easier to see on the screen the various areas that are being proposed. So, this is a townhouse development, fifty townhouse units proposed within eight buildings. Uh, those buildings are designated in kind of that reddish color. Uh, the bedroom mix is a combination of three to four bedrooms. The four-bedroom units are located at the ends of each building. We do have one-hundred-and-twenty-five parking spaces. Um, so that's essentially a ratio of two-point-five parking spaces per unit. Um, and just to kind of piggyback on the discussion that the city was just having, and the parking issues that the city has been experiencing, um, during my meeting with the mayor, actually, she raised a parking concern as well, um, given everything going on in the city. And so our team looked back, and we do believe it's feasible to have some of the driveways be double driveways. Um, so currently, there's one parking space in the garage, one parking space in the driveway, and then we have twenty-five guest parking spaces. Um, so, we're willing to work with staff as a condition of approval to see how many double driveways can be accommodated. Uh, we still need to meet the landscape requirements for the vehicular use areas, uh, but we're happy to accommodate additional driveway spaces to the extent that we can. Um, we also have a pool and cabana area. Those are located kind of in the purple that is closer to the lake. Um, we are exceeding all setbacks, meeting all code requirements. We're not asking for any variances or waivers associated with these applications. Uh, we are providing for sufficient open space, and the use is permitted now based on the land use and zoning. Um, now, there are some off-site improvements associated with this as well. Um, I highlighted in blue the new lake area. Uh, currently, a portion of the lake is actually on this development parcel. Uh, so that lake will be reconfigured, and it will provide an attractive buffer between those existing residential com, or residential homes to the south and this project. Um, in addition, we are providing, uh, substantial landscaping, and in particular, paying attention to that, uh, southern buffer, which is highlighted in yellow. Um, there is a continuous hedge along that buffer with trees. I think it has to be three trees per forty linear feet. So that is being provided, and it's a combination of gumbo limbos, Spanish stoppers, red-tipped cocoa plums. Um, and then we have a variety of other trees and shubs throughout the community and along the perimeter to really enhance the appearance of this property. We are also proposing to expand the city's, uh, wall. So we'll have the nice Tamarack wall that you see by the Pulte projects, that'll be extended, uh, to this area as well. Um, here we have some of the elevations. These are the flat elevations. There's two different elevation styles. So, you're not gonna have kind of one monotonous appearance from building to building. Um, we worked very closely with the city's architectural consultant and city staff. I think we had about eight or ten rounds of review and discussion with them, uh, to ensure not only is it meeting the city's design standards, but it's an elevated product. It's something that's unique to the city of Tamarack. Um, it has four-sided architecture, so the recesses that you see are going to be provided on all sides, and the treatments that you see will be provided on all sides as well. Um, and you can see that in these examples with the side and the rear elevations. And here you have renderings to put it into a little bit better perspective, exactly what's being proposed. Um, I think it helps visualize it more so than the flat elevations. Um, so you can see, uh, one of the elevation styles has that stucco banded treatment, while the other has a stone application. Um, but it is really an elevated product. Uh, there are also covered, uh, entryways and recesses to break up any kind of building massing that would otherwise, uh, be part of a typical townhouse product. Here are just a couple other views. Um, and then obviously, with the site plan, there are specific standards that need to be met, uh, that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, will comply with all applicable district use and development standards in the code, and will comply with, uh, any conditions of approval. Um, so, the backup material, uh, goes through a complete analysis of, uh, compliance with each of those. Um, I have a couple policies on the screen to highlight. Some of the policies speak to encouraging developers to use flexibility units, which was done here, to promote quality development. Again, we worked really hard with city staff to ensure that this is a really, um, high-quality development product. Encourage or enable a variety of housing opportunities, so we're providing, um, some new townhouse units that will be available to the city. Protect existing and planned residential areas from disruptive land uses and nuisance, nuisances. Um, and I wanted to bring that up, because again, this was initially proposed for commercial development. And so when you have commercial development, you have loading and unloading that typically occurs in the back, which is, in this case, adjacent to a residential area. So with this proposed development, uh, those types of nuisances are gonna be eliminated. Um, again, the staff report goes into detail as to how we comply with all of the development requirements in the land development regulations, but again, we are meeting all of them. With respect to traffic, this is actually a net decrease in traffic from the commercial use that was previously proposed. Um, so with the fifty dwelling units, AM peak hour is a total of thirty-eight cars going in or out of the development, so a little over one every two minutes. And then, uh, coming in at the PM peak hour, uh, it's forty-two trips per hour. Um, so again, one car every minute and a half or so. Um, we did bring this to the planning board, obviously, and they, uh, had a unanimous recommendation of approval. Um, staff also is providing a recommendation of approval and notes that we have met all of the requirements of the land development code. Um, we also are agreeable to, um, all of the conditions of approval that is noted in the staff report. Um, and one thing that I did want to bring up is, um, in the staff report, uh, one of the conditions speaks to providing an affordable housing contribution of one-thousand dollars per unit. Um, and D.R. Horton is willing to increase that to two-thousand-five-hundred dollars per unit, so it would be a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars total to, for, uh, the project, um, to address housing needs through the city's public purpose initiatives. Um, so that's something that D.R. Horton's willing to increase from what's within your staff report right now. Um, and with that, our team is available and happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Callaway, is there anything in the city's presentation that is not included in Ms. Belinky's presentation that we should see?
No, Madam Mayor, uh, Ms. Belinky has covered it. All the slides that would have been included in staff's presentation, I just wanna enter into the record the twelve conditions of approval with the adjustment that was made by Ms. Belinky.
You gonna answer them then? You wanna speak them in, or you're just?
No, they're in the back of this twelve, yeah. And the last one, number twelve, speaks to the affordable housing, which was just amended by Ms. Belinky.
Thank you.
Just, uh, it's, how, the city housing needs are public purpose. I think that's the condition modification for what I was talking about. Okay?
Please repeat.
Pardon me?
Exactly. What'd you say?
I'm just repeating what, uh, clarification what Ms., uh-
The increase from one-thousand to twenty-five-hundred per unit that will go into the city's affordable housing program.
So, it's to address housing needs in general that the city may have, um, through any related public purpose initiative?
To go to homeowners associations condo items?
Yeah, we, we, yes, we, we don't want to limit it to being applied to certain affordable housing programs, but we want to, the city to be able to utilize it for any related public purpose, whether it's having a homeowner that needs assistance fixing a roof because they're on fixed income, something along those lines, so, uh, related, uh, public purpose as well.
Specific related public purpose. Yes, gotcha. Okay. I have Gary Stoddard. It's now, we're now opening this for public comment. I have Mr. Stoddard who has signed up. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Mr. Stoddard, oh. I know you've been sitting for a while, sorry.
Okay, uh, I'm the homeowners association president of-
Okay, I'm the homeowners association president of Lakewood, which is the adjacent community. And I noticed in your picture, you have one street that goes out towards South Gate. Is that an exit or is that just an emergency?
Mr. Stoddard, we typically don't have people asking questions of the applicant, so you can ask them and then we'll get questions.
All right, okay. So that was my comment at a previous hearing that it needs to have one, it needs to have an exit on two ways. That was my comment the last time. And my only comment tonight is that we know that there's a certain amount of wildlife in that whole grove there that would specifically coyotes that would be, need to be relocated, not shoved into the other communities by a bulldozer. That's all.
That's it? That was easy. I'm sure the questions will be answered. Mr. Wasserman? Hey, that's okay. Slow and steady wins that race.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ronald Wasserman. I live at eight five seven seven J Drive here in Tamarack. My home adjoins this project. The site plan features four hundred and thirteen trees, sixteen hundred and seventy shrubs. It's not enough. When Pulte was building their homes, they put up shrubs, et cetera, et cetera, and nobody cared about that. So now we want to build this community. I urge you not to approve this as put forward. Why? There are too many holes in this. You showed nice pictures. We have had constant problems with trespassing in the Woodmont area. Most of you know that. So if you want to approve it, the big guns are here. They can talk all about it. But we are tired, and let me just tell you. My neighborhood is tired, not just me. They are intimidated by this process. I'm not. Mary, you meet with the builder? Yeah, everybody meets with the builder. This is just not the right project, the way it's being developed. Too many units. Way too many. This is my opinion, and this is the opinion of my neighborhood. Our homeowner association just tries so hard, and you have heard me speak about the trespassing issues, and Woodmont won't do anything about it. So you're going to approve this project? Here I go again with my voice getting loud. You're going to approve this project and you're just going to let people walk around? Walk around? We've had it with the developers in these meetings that you go through. So I'm urging you, please, 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 do not approve this project the way it stands. Please do not. I'm looking at every one of you. I come out here on a constant basis. I'm out of time. Thank you so much.
You've been heard, but thank you very much. Seeing that there's no one else who wishes to speak, public comments are now closed. Vice Mayor, this is your district. Would you like to go first?
Sure. First, let me address the two residents that came up. One, what can we do about the coyote and any wild animals? Because I do know when Pulte was building, I did hear about the iguanas. I didn't hear about coy, I heard about iguanas.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't know about iguanas specifically because they are invasive, so they're not required to necessarily be trapped. I think they can legally be killed because of their invasive nature. But with respect to coyotes and other kind of endangered animals, we are required as part of the construction permitting process to trap any animals and relocate them.
So you'll do that first before you start? Any?
If any animals are seen on the property, we are required to relocate them.
Who needs to see them?
Anybody that's out there during construction activities. I mean, we're not going to be monitoring in the middle of the night.
But is there a way to check first before the construction starts?
I think we can do that.
Yeah, because I think that's what he's saying. Before construction, can we relocate the animals?
I, I think we can do that, and it is typically something that is part of the permitting requirements.
But prior to?
I'm, I'm sure we can do that.
Okay. And then the next question regarding the greenery, he said there's not enough, so please don't take away what you already have, and can you put more?
If you don't mind pulling the presentation back up for me. I can tell you, we do exceed the code requirements quite a bit. So you can see there are different color-coded trees which speak to different landscape requirements. There are also trees that aren't color-coded, that have circles around them that are above code requirements, where we have the yellow. Again, there are trees there as well as the buffer. We have trees running along the entirety of the perimeter of the site. We have additional street trees adjacent to Pine Island and South Gate Boulevard. So we really do have trees almost everywhere that they can be put. I see a little spot near a parking area. I don't know if there's equipment and light poles there, which is maybe why that part doesn't have any, but we're, we're putting trees and landscaping really everywhere, both around the perimeter and internal to the site where there's green space.
Question, you said you're building the buffer wall, which thank you, right? But only on South Gate, not on Pine Island?
I believe it's on both. Yeah, it's on both.
It's on both. And then where you build the wall, you also have trees behind it?
Yes, there will be a buffer on the internal side, so a hedge internal so that we're not blocking the wall, and then there's street trees on kind of the roadway side, and then additional trees on the internal side of the wall as well. So there will be a pretty significant canopy.
So we'll have the buffer wall plus trees or edges?
Yeah, I don't know, does this have a?
Yeah, I can't, it's too small right here for me.
Yeah, so I mean, if we're looking at Pine Island here, the buffer wall is going to run along this entire property line. And then you see these purple trees on the inside of the wall. Those are internal to the site. And then we also have these kind of magenta-colored trees, which are the street trees that are going within the city's right-of-way as well. And that's similar to what we have on South Gate. And along South Gate, we're also making improvements within the median and adding additional landscaping within the median as well.
Now, how would that assist with trespassing? Because to me, you're making the lake bigger, right?
Right, so.
And then the wall.
Correct. Right now, there's really nothing, there's no barrier to prevent kids or others from coming, you know, across South Gate into the site. There's a little bit of a water body, but they, it's small, you can make your way around it, you can get into the golf course that way. The buffer wall that we're proposing is connecting all the way along South Gate, along our property line, and then I believe there's kind of this area of Woodmont as well where that connection will be made. And then you have the lake, which is on the other side of the buffer wall. So really, it's going to make it a lot more difficult for people to enter the property, where right now they might have to, you know, weave in between a couple trees that are overgrown. They're going to have a wall, they're going to have landscaping, they're going to have the lake. So all of that, in addition to having, you know, an existing community, well, a new community there, will prevent, you know, trespassing along this corner into the Woodmont property.
And then regarding the outlet or the inlet on South Gate?
Yeah, that's a point of clarification that I probably should have made during my presentation, so I apologize. Down at the south end here on Pine Island, this is our primary source of ingress and egress. So essentially, there's one access point for residents within the community. What we have along South Gate is an emergency access point for first responders that need to either get in or out of the site. We weren't able to have a full intersect, or a full access point here because it is so close to the intersection. So that was not something that was allowed, but we do have it for emergency purposes.
And do you happen to have, because one of my thing was the look of the, do you happen to have the old pictures compared to the changes you made?
I was, I was thinking I should have added those. I do not have the original or the older pictures, but they are quite different from what was initially proposed on the site, and I would say for, for the better by far personally.
Yeah. Thank you for the improvements, because it's definitely better. So whichever staff worked with you on this, thank you.
Yeah, staff is really pushing.
Yeah. That's it for me, thanks.
Thank you.
And thanks for the increase, because what we heard in our budget meeting prior to this was that some residents are in serious need, so whatever you can do to assist with their homes, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you. And to assist in making Woodmont look even better than it does, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will ask you some questions. Where is your south point for the drive, when the drive is coming in, coming in on Pine Island? Where exactly does it line up with what's across the street and south of it?
So you can see on this graphic here, we actually show the access point to the commercial development across the street, or one of the southernmost access point. So it is in line with that access to prevent conflicts with, you know, access points being skewed. With that, we are also improving the turn lanes, extending the turn lanes to facilitate movements into the site.
That's why I was curious, because there is a bit of a backup sometimes when it gets really busy at the end of the day. So it turns in and then it turns out. You're fixing it to be that way?
Yes.
The streets are private, right?
Correct.
It's not gated?
It is not gated.
My concerns are kids coming from across the way when they don't go home right away after school and, ooh, there's a pool, ooh, there's a tot lot. Or parking there. Will you have any kind of security around there to be telling people that they don't have the right to park there?
I don't know that there will be security at all times because it is only fifty dwelling units, and that would be a pretty significant cost for those homeowners. But I'm sure if they are noticing an issue, they will find a mechanism to start enforcing that.
You know I have a lot of trouble with the parking situation.
I do.
And to, while it sounds good, it's a hundred and twenty-five spots. It's not a hundred and twenty-five spots. I had asked, and I don't know if you have the answer for it now, how many three-to-four-bedroom homes do you have?
There are sixteen four-bedrooms. They are the end caps of each of the buildings, and the remainder, so thirty-four, are three-bedroom units.
So they're all three- or four-bedroom units?
Correct.
And at this time, they all have one driveway and one car garage?
Correct. We are willing to work with staff to accommodate as many double driveways as possible.
Are you able to give us an idea of how many that is?
So not without confirming that we're not going to run into landscape issues and removal of, you know, required trees. We think we can accommodate about two per building. You know, within the larger building blocks, potentially a third, but it's something that staff would need to review as well.
You guys sat here for the whole entire fun that we had regarding parking situations, right?
Yes.
I'm not sure, and I blame us for this. I know our code has not been changed despite conversations about it, and I do not get, I understand you admit the minimum. I don't like our minimum. Our minimum doesn't work for reality. And I want to get to yes, but I'm having a big issue, more than the twenty-five hundred dollars per person, per unit, on the fact that this community is going to have some serious parking issues when you have three-bedroom places mostly and then a couple of four. You cannot tell me that these places are not eventually going to have four cars. Give it on the even, maybe just three cars. And all the parking down there that's supposed to be for guests, or having people say, who's going to get what spot? I have concerns. Other than telling us that you can agree to making sure it's conditioned on some additional spots pending the city's rules and regulations on landscaping, is there anything else you can say to hopefully make some of us feel better?
I mean, what I can say is, D.R. Horton very much would like to see double driveways as well. We, we tried to see if we could fit them in in every unit, and there, there are obvious conflicts with some of the corners especially. So we know, you know, we can't provide them at absolutely every unit, but from their standpoint, they very much want to see double driveways. They were considering it through the process, did not make that change, but, you know, they, they want to see that accommodated to the extent that, you know, they're able to do so as well.
What are the whiffs of the roadways?
Twenty-four feet.
So it's twelve and twelve. Cars are about ten feet wide. If you've got the big suburban, you might be a little bit larger. If you have the smaller ones, you... There's going to be parking on the street issues on this one. I understand that you're willing to put in a condition to make some double driveways, but I also hear the contingency on the provision of the double driveways being up to the city. And if they meet the landscaping code, and if the landscaping code doesn't allow you to do it, then you can't meet the contingency of adding double driveways to each of the units, right? Ms. Callaway, correct?
The condition can read the applicant agrees where feasible to add double driveway.
But the problem is where feasible doesn't tell me if it's even feasible for one, or two, or ten, or twenty, right? To be able to get to where there's enough parking for this community, this brand-new, beautiful community, people are going to be odds already when they don't have parking for their cars.
Yeah, all I can tell you is we, again, we are exceeding the code requirements. We're not just meeting the code requirements, and my client very much wants to see double driveways, so they are committed to finding solutions.
Okay, then I'll ask this. I don't know if it's a city thing that we can do. Can we waive the requirement for this extra greenery and grass stuff that we have between, for being as wide so they can fit doubles in? I mean...
Clarification, this is my district. No one has complained about one that parking or anything like that. There's two, in fact, what they do want is greenery. They're on a golf course for a reason, so they do want the greenery. There's a couple other townhouses there. I see people park on the street, private streets, never once, I went to their HOA, never once did they complain about parking. So to just create a problem that's not a problem is unfair. To take away greenery, which even my community that I live in, the resident just came up and asked... which even my community that I live in, the resident just came up and asked for greenery, is unfair. We're not gonna create a problem that's not a problem to not give the community greenery that they asked for. That's why, anyone who lives on a golf course, guess what, they love green. They do, that's why we live there. So to take that away to put concrete, no.
So I think there's not an understanding of my comment and there's nobody living in this community yet that can say whether or not they like it because they...
They don't have to buy here.
Okay, Vice Mayor, you have your opinion, I'm entitled to mine. This is not an argument with you.
It's not.
So out of some of the design layout that we have here, if it could be modified to where it could be up closer to the house, add a little expansion, still be pretty, where people will enjoy it, but add the additional parking, cause my fear is you might get people buying in right away, but you're gonna have people selling because they're not gonna be able to grow their families and do what they need in the community because we have not asked you or us to change some of the things in our rules for this community to be a great success. Now, we can easily just rubber stamp it and say, yeah, but I'm telling you my concerns for the future and you guys are gonna be gone. Some of us may no longer be on the dais because it'll be 20, 30 and we'll be gone, but we'll still live in the city and we'll still hear about it. So that's why I'm asking if there was any way to do some kind of variance. I hear what you have asked and said on the record to do, that you'll do based on the city's feasibility. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing, seeing none? City clerk, please call the...
May I go, Ms.?
No.
You wanna speak or you now want to...
Cause I'm, I'm trying to formulate my questions, so, um, I'm not, I'm not your done writing.
Well, we're gonna have no choice with you not being done writing. Commissioner Patterson, do you wanna ask a question or are you ready for voting? Cause...
No, I wanted to, I, I, I had some comments.
Okay, Commissioner Patterson, she's about your five minutes, maybe.
Thank you, um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, you know, wasn't, um, um, afforded the opportunity to have a conversation. Are these the developers in the back here?
Uh, there are three representatives from D.R. Horton here.
Okay, okay. Um, so, you know, for me, um, you know, I have questions, um, just related to the project overall, this is the first time I'm seeing it on the screen tonight. Um, you know, there are some just things that I think are important, um, I'm not sure if it's, um, a staff thing or if it's, you know, the builder, but I think it's important that when we package up an item, at least the renderings are a part of it. Again, some, I know a lot of times that we, you know, we, um, have a practice of, um, well, I don't know what the practice is, I feel like the practice should be a little bit different in that it should really be important to everyone doing business in our city to have a conversation with the entire commission. I think that's important, um, especially when the backup is vague. I, the first time I saw a picture of this project is tonight in this meeting. So, um, I think instead of me just trying, instead of me talking in circles, let me just make it very plain and direct, I would appreciate to have had an opportunity to dialogue about this project prior to tonight's meeting. Um, while I understand your office reached out, I found out late last week that you reached out, that's not enough time to be able to set a meeting and have a discussion.
Okay, I apologize for that, um, my assistant was directed to reach out about two weeks in advance of tonight, so I, I apologize on my end and I'll look into that.
Um, the, the, I guess questions I have is, um, I did see in the backup that there is, um, three and four bedrooms and it says at 575. Does that mean you guys are selling every unit at 575 or did staff leave out some information?
No, that's a ballpark estimate as to what a unit might sell for, it'll ultimately depend on the market at the time, you know, the product is ready to be sold.
I mean, you know, I think we need to have, that's, that's kind of a, an important detail, um, to some extent, you know, we just kinda wanna have an idea, um, you know, what, what's, what is, what's our, what's our anticipated, um, tax revenue? What's the projection on revenues?
And I do think we did provide that in the backup and it is part of the staff report.
I'm just, you know, the, so the project you guys are selling at 575 times 50 units, you're anticipating about 30 millions in potential revenue from this, from this project overall, right? So I just, so I did read the backup, I'm clear on what the project says on paper, I'm just asking, you know, from a standpoint of a number, there's only one number with three to four bedroom units, which, are we gonna be in the million range once, you know, it's, what's the range, is there a range?
Um...
Uh, cause I got one number in the backup for Advalorensax projections, is that number a flat number or is that also a projection, is it a scale?
It's, it's a projection, I think we're anticipating to sell the units in the $500,000 range. Um, again, it's not set in stone because that's not something that, you know, it's on the market today, it's gonna be on the market in a few months, so, um, depending on construction costs, it may go up or down a little bit, it's not going to jump to 1 million. Um, so it is, it is a fair estimate to use.
Okay, um, I, I'm sure, you know, and I, I ask that question because obviously, you know, we wanna ensure that, you know, we, our, our neighborhoods are solvent, um, and that, you know, we're approving smart projects and smart development and so, um, to some extent, you know, I think, you know, the, the details are, are important, especially if, you know, this is the one and only time that we'll be kinda engaging at this level around this project. So are we saying that we won't be going past a number? Cause I mean, how do we anticipate as a commission approving a project at 575? What if the market changes by the time that, what's, what's the, how, what's the deliverable date in terms of if it's approved tonight, when will, when will the, the project be finished?
Let me see if I can get an estimate for you. So the earliest deliverable date, uh, would be towards the end of next year, so the end of 2026.
So you guys, so we're at the end of '25, so you guys expect to get 50 units done in a year?
That's, that's kind of the earliest deliverable unit. Um, it'll probably go on, you know, I don't know, what's your construction timeframe? Six? Right, closeout would be in 2027.
Okay, I'm not sure how we would typically, and, and maybe, um, through the manager, Ms. Callaway, I'm not sure, I just have a question around that, what happens when we approve at 570, cause that's what's before us, is, you know, the backup is kinda giving those numbers and I just wanna have an understanding around what happens, um, you know, late '26, early '27, when, you know, I don't know, numbers change, um, the economy goes up, down, whatever?
Right.
How do we, how do, is there a means or mechanism to regulate that or does the developer just have the ability to just scale their prices?
Right, it's just market driven, absolutely, so it's market driven and so the projections we provided and the fiscal impact is based on the proposed, uh, market rate for the units.
Is there a target AMI for the project?
Uh, no, there are market rate units.
They're just market rate?
Correct.
Are there any units designated for, uh, workforce or...
No, we're perfor, we're providing the in lieu contribution.
Well, I know that there's a thousand dollar in lieu contribution, but I mean, even if you, even if you guys were getting a tax credit, it wouldn't really equate affordable, so...
So to clarify, we've increased that contribution from a thousand dollars per unit to 2,500 for a total of $125,000 for the project.
Okay, so that $125,000 is a community benefit?
Yes.
Okay, what other community benefits, um, that did you, was, I didn't see a list in the backup, I just saw that as a condition of the discussion with planning, but are there any other community benefits? Have you guys done any community outreach on the project?
Uh, we have had a few different community meetings over, um, the course of the project, this project has been going on for the better part of three plus years. Um, so we had one community meeting early on and then a second, you know, as our plans developed further, uh, but we have had outreach to the community.
And the community was favorable, what was the feedback?
Yeah, for the most part, um, it was residents, uh, you know, abutting the project, uh, abutting the golf course there that came for the most part, um, and they were fairly favorable, especially considering, um, you know, it was previously approved for commercial use and now this is for, uh, you know, proposed for townhomes, which is a lot more compatible. Um, plus with the lake reconfiguration that we're providing and the additional buffers, um, it seemed from my perspective that most of the community, uh, that we met with was favorable.
I, uh, I saw in the materials that you guys are proposing, uh, redoing the median on Pine Island, um, but I recognize that the project also abuts the, um, South Gate corridor as well, are you guys gonna do the median on that side as well?
So we are making certain improvements along Pine Island, um, specifically, we are extending the left turn lane, um, and because of that, uh, the Welcome to City Tamarack sign needs to be relocated. Um, so we are relocating the city's sign to the wall at the corner of South Gate and Pine Island and then the intersection along South Gate, um, where it's a little bit wider, it's got some trees in there now, we're going to be enhancing that landscaping as well.
Are you guys relocating the sign or, um, or replacing it and making it new?
Uh, essentially, it will be a new sign, a much bigger, nicer Welcome to Tamarack sign.
Um, can I take my two minutes?
Yes.
Um, the other question I wanted to ask you is whether, um, oh God, that buzzing noise just threw me off, um, are any subcontractors, any local subcontractors on your project? What, 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 what consideration is being given to, um, local, local subs on the, on the project?
So, uh, D.R. Horton allows everybody to bid, including local contractors, um, and, you know, they, they select who's best suited for the development of this project, it's not like they have a standard group of contractors that they use for every project, so they will open it up to, uh, local contractors and subs.
Um, I, I would just, you know, I would definitely urge, um, my colleagues to, um, you know, make that a provision or a requirement of the project. Um, I think that we have, um, we definitely wanna give preference to our local, um, vendors and folks that live in our community that, um, I think that's a benefit, that falls under a commu, a benefit to our community and while they may not be able to necessarily live there, at least they'll be able to partner in the project and, um, generate some, um, revenue from, you know, being able to partner with the, with the developer on the project.
Yeah, I know on other projects before, we've done, you know, additional outreach efforts to kind of attract local contractors to bid, um, so we can see what's been done similar to that in the past and ensure we're, you know, trying to attract, uh, bids from local develop, or local contractors and subcontractors.
Yeah, it'd be great, I mean, you guys could host a job fair here locally in the city, um, open up your, your, um, your, your, um, opportunities for subs and, you know, the city can certainly, I'm sure, partner in getting the word out, um, and at least if there is a couple of opportunities created, I think that that would be a great way to partner with the city, um, you know, in, in a project of this nature. Um, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright, you were lit? No, Vice Mayor?
Thanks. Just in reference to what the commission said regarding, um, local contractor and giving them, I guess, favor, but not to the extent that we're down in the quality of the product.
Agreed.
Because I think one of the things I stand for as a resident and a property owner in this community is that we have the best quality in Woodmont, so nothing, you know, I said the best quality to me would mean the best subcontractors, the best contractors, you know, the best workers, the best, um, products, nothing cheap that's gonna break for half a million dollar. No one that's not gonna show up to work, you know, find the best, preferably, hopefully the best is a Tamarack resident, I mean, but if not, get the best.
Right, and I think, I think the idea would be to ensure we're doing outreach to local contractors so that they at least understand the project is coming in and have the opportunity to bid.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolton?
What, what does to the extent that it's doable mean?
Really to the extent that the code permits.
I would prefer like there's, there's something concrete, you know, like there, there is a, a solid agreement to something. So it sounds like you're, you're saying if it's, if it's doable, then we'll hear, well, we couldn't do it because it was not doable.
I understand where you're coming from and I think that's a valid point, um, but without staff vetting our plans and, you know, I, I just don't know if it's going to trigger variances or other code issues. We would love to be able to get up to, you know, three parking spaces per unit overall if we can, but again, um, without having staff review that, I don't know that I could commit to something like that. Um, we're hopeful at a minimum, we'd be able to get two, uh, double driveways in each building.
The, the people who are here, are the developers, I heard, are they decision makers?
Uh, there are some decision makers, yes.
Okay. Um, Mayor, was your posture, um, like a, like a motion to table to iron out more details? Because I don't, I don't know if I'm, if I'm ready to vote on this tonight.
Yeah, I, with all due respect, I mean, we've been in this process for three to four years.
I understand, um, so Mayor, was it, was it a posture for motion to table or...
No, it was more... No, it was more a posture for the city commission to direct city, um, staff to do everything possible to make sure that they can have the additional parking for this community while of course keeping it beautifully landscaped, but making it where it looks beautiful and pretty, but parkable.
So Ms. Callaway, how can that be accomplished tonight?
Uh, Commissioner, we can add a 13 condition that the developer agreed to add additional parking, um, provided, uh, it does not, uh, create any variances, if you don't want to say, uh, we're feasible, but we're here in the Vice Mayor as well and so we wouldn't want a situation where there is a pervous area, impervious area impact as well as landscape variances and so we'd like to have an opportunity to look at that. So if you're uncomfortable to, uh, with to the extent feasible or provided it meets the code, but we, uh, would definitely go back and make every effort to add additional spaces and then we can report that back to the commission.
I, I just don't think that's acceptable, like, you know, we're gonna go back and look, what if you go back and look and there's, and, and there, it's not feasible, then what happens?
I think the objective is not to create impacts particularly as it relates to landscape and so if we wanna be specific and say, uh, provided there's no, uh, they're at 43% I believe, um, in terms of pervous area, I think that's what it says, um, the code requires like 40%, and so they're fully landscaped, they're not asking for any variance and it sounds like that's, uh, what the Vice Mayor wants to be least impacted.
Okay, the question was asked about, um, community outreach, um, and you did address community outreach, you, you went to the community and you asked, and you, that, that's a condition of...
Yes, they did, yes. And we also sent notices out, uh, twice for, uh, this meeting as well as for the planning board meeting.
So just tell us what the community said again?
Um, so they, they had general questions regarding what we were proposing, but nobody had any significant issues or concerns or objections. Um, generally, uh, the people that came out, for the most part, lived, um, adjacent to the golf course just south of this project and they wanted to know what was going on in their backyard, they were inquiring as to what the development would be, um, but, you know, they were generally supportive, most were happy to see that it was... Most were happy to see that it wasn't going to be a commercial use where they would have to look at loading and unloading and that they'd be getting, you know, a residential community that was more compatible with their community as well. And then, there were some questions about, you know, what was happening with the golf course, you know, the lake, those types of things as well.
So, I mean, I will make a decision based on what I hear tonight. But since you talked about what residents said, I'll share with you what some residents are seeing online. All of them are negative, by the way, but I'll just read some of them. "Nothing like building on a pesticide, weed killer, and fertilizer-fueled piece of land. I'm sure the kids will love making mud pies out of it." Another one says, "Unbelievable." Another one says, "Money talks. Screw us peons." Another one says, "More people. Tamarack is overpopulated." Another one says, "Horrid. Just horrid." Another one says, "Crime galore." Another one talks about students in that area would be accessing the property, but you said that there is no security gate. Can you address the security gate?
So, I mean, there's a wall around the perimeter of the property with a hedge, with trees. That's the security. There's no gate to prevent cars from, you know, going into the community or out of the community. There wouldn't be sufficient stacking to allow for a gate. But there's a lot better security than what exists currently today.
And clarification, do any of those people even live in Woodmont that you're reading? Because every, that you're reading, Commissioner? Because every development I have seen since I've been here has been on the golf course. So, do any of them even live in Woodmont? That's the first question I'd like to ask. And no, the kids aren't trespassing. They don't even trespass on the golf course. Because that thing is walking distance from my house, across the street. So, let's not tell lies on people's children.
So, I'm repeating what I read online about your project, right? So, for me, I drive through Woodmont. This project does not look like Woodmont. And no shade to North Lauderdale, but it looks like North Lauderdale. I don't, I don't think it's pretty. I think that it's not going to fit into the texture of that community. And residents have always talked about how pristine and beautiful Woodmont is. I don't think that how it looks adds, you know, necessarily a beautiful value. So, if you came from another elevation, you came from another look, and you came to this... I mean, thank you for coming to this look, but I don't think it still looks right. Let's talk about the proffer that you made. I'm a little concerned about $2,500 going to housing initiatives. While there are a lot of housing...
Commissioner, I think it was broadened, it was, scope was broadened. She had corrected.
Correct, but the mayor alluded to housing-specific projects. And what I don't want to hear is that the additional $1,500 is for housing-specific projects. I want to hear that it's for public purposes, whatever that might be.
Right, and...
So, please clarify.
Right, we're comfortable with public purposes so long as there's a rational nexus.
As long as?
There's a rational nexus. So, it addresses some impacts that would be associated with the project.
Explain rational nexus.
So, you know, typically, there has to be some kind of nexus with the impacts that the project would make and, you know, the public purpose that it is going to address. Housing, for example, is impacted because, you know, we're proposing new housing on the property and, you know, affordable housing is such a big need in the county that it makes sense. We're willing to expand that to other public purposes and city initiatives so that, you know, again, if somebody needs help with a roof repair, but they're on a fixed income, something like that, the city would have some discretion to address those other public purposes.
I mean, you worked on the Woodlands project. That's a separate client on a different day. But I would not want to, for instance, tie the hand of the district commissioner. If one of her residents call and say, "I can't pay a light bill," she, that is a public purpose. She should be allowed to be able to tap into those funds and help a resident. And I don't want to hear nexus meaning that it's only for Woodmont area or for District 4. It should be a public purpose for the entire city and should be left abroad.
And that is not the intent, that it would be restricted to a certain district. It would be something that is available citywide. And if an electric bill needs to be paid, I would certainly say that's something that would fall under this bucket.
Okay, so we'll find the city attorney and help us out.
I believe the petition attorney is basically indicating that public purpose, you know, means essentially if there's a need in this community and is related to housing and related to, you know, insecurity, you know, light bill and the grant, and different purposes, similar to, you know, the funds were used for Woodmont. You know, she was counsel for Woodlands, I mean. So, similar in terms of, because those funds have to be public purpose, and they have because I have reviewed them, okay? So, yeah, so...
So, can those funds be looked at as discretionary and divided by five?
Point of clarification, these items?
I'm asking the city attorney a question.
Right now, it's a voluntary proffer in terms of what the commission decides to do with it at a later date. It's up to you guys, but it has to stay within a public purpose, Graham.
Point of clarification. This item is being asked for, for money that goes into the affordable housing instead of putting affordable housing. Granted, you're under the 100-unit mark, so you didn't even need to do that. But we have a rule on the books that said if we were going to have any money that is going to be used for the city, if it's going to be asked by somebody, we were to have a workshop on it versus having a person stand at the dais, the podium, having to proffer feeling under duress. This is not the way it doesn't...
Those are your words, not hers. Do you feel like you're under duress?
It doesn't matter. That is what the rules of this commission were set up. So, we were not doing this to our applicants.
It doesn't preclude her from making a voluntary proffer.
Okay, do you feel like you're under duress?
What's the point of rules if we don't follow?
I'm asking the applicant a question.
I'm asking the city attorney to answer the question.
Mayor, she can make a voluntary proffer, which she did. And all she's doing is explaining the use of the proffer. Thank you.
You made a voluntary proffer. Do you feel like you're under duress?
I do not.
Okay. Would you be okay with the funds being discretionary and broad?
Again, so long as it's for a public purpose.
Discretionary, broad, and for a public purpose.
Yes.
Well, the public purpose has to be, Mo.
Yeah, so I said discretionary, broad, and public purpose. And she said yes, correct?
Correct.
Can I clarify before, because your time is up?
No, he's on his two minutes.
You said about the property or the proposed pictures of how it looks. It's ugly and it doesn't meet standards. What would meet standards? Could somebody from, I don't know who that would be, if it's our deputy manager, tell us what would meet the standards regarding the look? And it fitted in to the Woodmont area? Because that was, that was a big statement. We don't want to do that where the look doesn't fit. So, let's deal with that part.
Vice Mayor, compatibility is always at the forefront when we look at bringing a project to a location. We also have an on-staff architect, and I think as the applicant had mentioned, we went back and forth with our architect just to make sure that we had something that was modern, but included certain elements as was shown, and that was compatible with the surrounding area.
Is there anything we could do to make it more compatible or even more of an upgrade?
Like, is it the color? Is it because it has some architectural features on some of the buildings? So, it doesn't have the same elements going throughout the entire project? And I think that was deliberate. So, if there's anything in specific you'd like to point out, then, and if the applicant is amenable? And maybe, yeah, because these are, yeah, these are better renderings.
Not being vindictive or anything, but if there's something not right, I would like us to save and fix it before it goes any further. Because I don't want anything ugly. Not in my community. So, let's make it beautiful.
All right, so you'll go back, you'll figure out whether or not you can do, give us additional parking. And that will be a condition precedent? 13th?
Yes, if this commission would like to add that as condition 13.
Okay, so I'd like that to be added. Ms. Callaway, you think that this is compatible, looking at the other houses in the area?
I do. I find it attractive, so maybe, I think it looks great.
Maybe we should move from Davey and go live in one of them.
Yeah, I'm thinking about downsizing. That's a possibility. The girls are in college, though.
Time to retire.
That, too, is a consideration.
I mean, listen, I didn't make a big statement. This is, this is my opinion, right? Like, I don't, I don't think that it's...
So, what could be fixed?
But, point of clarification, Vice Mayor Daniel, you're relying on the whole project based on his opinion? Well, then he doesn't have to buy a unit there. Just like he said something else. He doesn't have to buy a unit there. Can we?
And no shade to you guys. I mean, if you were here at other commission meetings, this is mild comparing to what you, you might hear in other commissions. So, to the pretty lady in white, you know, I apologize for, you know, saying your project is ugly. You know, but I just have to make sure that I, that I put in record what residents are saying and, you know, they don't find it necessarily attractive. But, you know, you've ironed out my two biggest concerns. My three biggest concerns are compatibility. The community development director for now says that the project is compatible. Number two, there is a contention that there could be a 13th condition based on what the mayor said. And number three, the funds, the $125,000 would be discretionary, broad, and for a public purpose. The decision makers are here. $125,000 is kind of a little bit. So, do you want to ask them if they can increase it?
With all due respect, I'd...
Point of clarification, don't even answer that one. Ms. Maxine?
It's not up to you for her to answer that.
She can answer in a second. But if the city attorney is not going to say what the policy is, then...
Mayor, first of all, this was a condition as part of the zoning and planning board.
No, this is being upped. It's being upped.
This city commission has authority to amend any condition.
Correct, but this is circumventing the policy that this commission put in place to avoid this right now.
You asked him to answer, and then you're speaking above him.
Well, no, because he's not answering. I wasn't asking him the question. I was asking Ms. Callaway.
So, you'll speak below him if he's agreeing with you?
He's not agreeing with me. He's saying that we get to change it right here.
Yeah, because the planning board is a subservient board to this commission. The commission could change whatever the planning board agreed. They could even reverse the decision.
That's not the point. The point is the policy we put in place as a commission has nothing to do with the planning board to avoid this very thing from happening. So, when applicants come to the table, they are not all of a sudden asked for increases or changing in the way they originally said that they were going to do something.
Well, the policy didn't apply. The planning board and commission can obviously amend it.
The planning board can't amend it? The planning board didn't set the rules.
I said the commission.
But it's in place right now. And the point being, we are doing exactly what we put a rule in place to not have done.
What rule? Where?
First of all, it's a condition of the planning board approval, which the commission has the right to amend. Simple.
Clarification, I'm sorry, and this is not clarification. But I'm looking because I don't want it to be ugly. I'm still on the ugly. If they put the N-units, right?
We don't have any time left, by the way.
They really don't have any more time.
I don't, I don't, but I'm asking for...
Nation kind of is done.
I'm clarifying.
Okay, we're clarifying the colors. Would you like to tell us the colors?
If I go, close my eye and give you concrete, I'm giving you what you want. Make it double garage, maybe that will look better? What did you say? I'm sorry. Talk loud, even though you're not smart.
There are applicants that have sworn themselves, if so, just join the podium, please, because we can't hear you on the record for it.
It wouldn't be a garage that's expanded. It would be the driveway in front of the garage would be expanded.
Okay. So, maybe if it's a two-car garage?
The architects won't allow for a two-car garage.
Please, please come and then state your name, please.
We've had Keith Leonard, D.R. Horton. We've had 10 meetings with your staff architect to go through the architectural details of this project. Painstakingly, we have gone through, changed roof lines, elevations, the materials that we've used. I mean, I don't know what else. If your staff architect is not, you know, he's happy with what we've done, so I don't know how anybody can say it's ugly when I'm just, you know... I'm not going to say. Right now, this product has been through 10 reviews of your staff architect. And, you know, the last phone call, we changed roof lines. We stepped the roof lines back and, you know, and did all kinds of changes to make them happy. So, I think that if you're going to rely on your staff, that we've gone through and done everything that we can.
And in all fairness, I think if we had seen the old compared to the new, it would be...
Nine and a day.
You would see the difference, yeah, nine and a day.
There's only one person complaining about it.
I know.
Really, we're spending a little too much time on that. Well, you know what? People are going to put online, if they're going to put on nasty, they're going to put on nasty. They may not even live in Tamarack.
Right, I agree. So, the N-units with the driveway, right, make these...
We will make the driveway changes, whatever. If we can do double driveways on every unit, we'll do double driveways on every unit. We have other criteria that we have to meet.
I get it.
If we work out with your staff that this is what we can do, we'll do it. It's just, you know, we have to work through your staff to make sure that, you know, that they're happy with what we're doing when we add the additional drive space.
And make it look like a half a million dollars.
They'll be beautiful. There's more landscaping that's put in around this project. The additional lake, the buffer, the adjoining communities.
Commissioner Wright?
No, I have 14 seconds. You...
Less. Go.
Thank you. So, is there any consideration to increase the proffer? And when will this payment be made?
So, with all due respect, we've increased the proffer from what it was initially of 1,000 per unit. We're now at 2,500 per unit. That's a pretty substantial increase and more than the affordable...
When did you make that proffer, too?
So, it was a condition that we agreed upon at the planning board, and so now...
The planning board is a slap in the face, but anyway.
So, it was based on what Pulte had done in the area with 1,000... So it was based on what Pulte had done in the area with a one thousand dollar contribution per unit. It's with what other developers have done in the city in the past. We understand housing costs have increased over time, so we're proposing the additional increase of an additional one thousand five hundred in order to allow for kind of those market adjustments.
Payment is made when?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Payment is made when?
So we would be willing to make payment within sixty days of closing. We.
When do you close?
As soon as we can get permits in hand, it would be no later than June of 2026. But we would have the option to close sooner, so long as we have our drainage permit from the county, our land development permits in hand, and we are working to do that expeditiously. So hopefully, much sooner than that, to the extent possible.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at your units, you said five seventy-five, that's just sort of like a number. Usually, when people are selling homes, there's ranges based on like bedrooms. The three bedrooms would be five hundred, and four bedrooms would be six hundred. Out of curiosity, why no two bedrooms unit, units?
We just felt that, we just felt that this area would warrant a larger product and that we, you know, most people we find want three bedrooms. I mean, two bedrooms are tough to, you know, to, to sell outright, because most families want to have three bedrooms. You know, if even if you have, you know, if they want it for a guest room and other, you know, you get larger families, you want to have the four bedroom, so.
Why exact questions? Because our first time home buyer program currently from Ramos Calloway caps at four fifty. So I think there's a lot of people who complain that there's not a lot of inventory on the market at, at that price point. And the fact that this is new industry coming on, coming on, coming on strain. You know, there, there should have been a way, at least those first time home buyers at that four fifty mark, would have something where they can probably purchase a unit or two, which is where I asked about the two bedrooms. You know, not, not understanding market prices, market forces. I'm a capitalist, I understand how capitalism work, but knowing that we have a lot of young families and, and part of the American dream is buying their first home, and these are posh, they're posh. I mean, I think they're very posh looking, for, for the Woodmont. Posh, that's a. The Woodmont era, and trust me, I know the Woodmont area very well, I had a friend that, a friend that lives in there in one of those newer homes. So it, it does fit into that, that look of that area, that's very posh. But that's, that was my only questions, how can we get units available at those prices? Is that something you guys would be willing to, you know, one or two units?
It, you know, we're paying, we're paying you twenty-five hundred dollars to help offset the cost of the affordable housing product. You know, for us, you know, it, it's very difficult to reach that target of four fifty is the target, based on what your land cost and your development costs are. It makes it difficult to try to hit that, that target range.
So, so none of these homes are going to be below five? You, you said five seventy-five, but it seems like these are going to be five to seven, based on how you're, based on, based on what you're saying.
Right, right now, I mean, we're, we're two years away from being, to market these. I mean, we don't know what the market will be by the time we go to sell.
Based on comps in that area? I mean, you, 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 you've obviously done some comparison, and five seventy-five is what, is the average?
Would be what we would think would be, you know, right now.
For townhouses?
Yes.
And going back to Ms. Point, I think most times when people purchase a townhouse, it's like their first home, it's a starter home, and then they, when the, when the family gets bigger, people kind of move into a single family home. So I can understand, I understand the issue with the, the cars having the one, the one space and then the, the one garage, because usually it's a starter home, but at five hundred, six hundred K, I mean, that's.
You'd be surprised what we're, what we're, what we're building at.
Kind of reminds me of the places, did you guys do in, is Oakland Park, it's up east, close to.
We've done stuff in Oakland Park, we're doing stuff in Pembroke Pines right now, we're doing townhouses in Pembroke Pines. And there, I think, in, close to the Sevens, yeah, so they're in the Sevens for townhouses.
Is that the community in Pines close to Chapel Trail Out West? Did you guys do that community? There's a, there's a new townhouse community.
On the corner of Pines Boulevard and One Seventy Second.
One Seventy, yeah, okay.
It's where the old school board brought it, where the school was, they had the trailers.
Yes, and is this community going to be, have a similar look to that, that, that community?
These are a little, actually a little bit bigger.
A little bigger?
Yeah.
Hmm, a little bigger and better?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Thanks.
So. Can you just clarify or reiterate the wall on the west side or the east side that's being done between Woodmont Gardens and the community?
The wall on the east side, so there, I don't believe we're proposing a wall here, if that's what you're asking. There is a wall.
Sorry.
Sorry?
I, I really can't see, it's like right above my head. So it's on the eastmost side, I believe when we spoke, you said that there was a wall separating or just enclosing the community. So along with the lake, people at the Woodmont Gardens would not be concerned that people were going to cut through their community to try to get here.
Sorry, remind me, Woodmont Gardens is.
It's the community on the other side of this lake.
On the other side of the lake, right. So it won't be a wall, it would be a fence or, I believe it would be a fence with a hedge, like a continuous hedge along the entirety and the required trees in addition to the lake and the buffer.
Purpose being, no one's coming through and cutting through.
Correct.
That community, because I know that there was an expressed concern earlier tonight. Reiterating for somebody else who may be curious, the N units of the four, it's the middles that are threes.
Correct.
The money being proffered is for affordable housing, for the city to be using for affordable housing purposes and housing purposes run by the city. Is that what you're proffering? Or are you proffering that the city commission can receive these funds and utilize them?
It would be for other public purposes as well. Our hope would be that they would be helping other owners or renters within the city, but it would be for, you know, the city's public purpose initiatives.
City administration, not commission administration. Are these funds coming to the commission to be divided in five for us to.
They're, they're going to the city.
Going to the city's funds for the city to be utilizing.
We are.
It will be, it will be given to the city, like any proffer, the manager can come back to the commission, ask for direction, what to do it.
You can't change a company's proffer without their approval. That's why the last one, you needed to get an agreement in writing, in writing, remember, in writing.
The city, the manager get direction, that's his job.
You cannot change a company's proffer. Anyway. It is on the record, it is clear, but I'm questioning our city. Will we do everything possible to make sure that the additional parking spaces can be allotted, Ms. Maxine? What wording do we need to have? No, for, for what, whatever's in landscape and visually pleasing to add additional parking.
I, I think there was a condition added, number thirteen, based on.
I understand it was number thirteen, but the conversation went on about how it could be subject to the city not allowing it. And I'm asking if the city is going to waive some of that and make sure that it's doing everything within its power to keep it beautiful, landscape nice, looking pretty, but adding parking, not more, not two spots. That's up to, I get a lot of blank space stares at me on this one.
Yes, I'll answer, yes, they're going to do their best.
Then it comes from the commission as such, that's the proffer, right? And that's the agreement by the city, because we say so, if we agree to this? Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, just wanted to echo the sentiments of my colleague on the, on the commission. You know, I, I think that, you know, as we bring development and we bring projects, we want our community to recognize that, you know, as the community rises, they'll be able to rise as well, right? And this community benefit will create those opportunities, right? We've got, you know, people that live nearby that potentially have assessments. There's a number of things, this is not limited to affordability, we don't have an affordability engine in our city. So whatever it is that we do from a public purpose standpoint is meeting the needs, right? And so I think that, you know, as I look at the overall total cost of the project, one twenty-five isn't necessarily proportionate or commensurate with the total value of the project. It's not even a point five percent of the project. One twenty-five is less than point five of the total value of the project. So what we're saying is that, you know, we, we want to be partners in this, right? Perhaps there's been conversations, I don't know, you know, I haven't, I don't know what the overall, you know, temperature is of, you know, communities nearby, and as you see, I mean, we're the only ones here tonight, right? But as people, as we, as people start to find out about the project, you know, obviously, there is, you know, we, we want to be able to speak positively about our decision around the project. And I think this is a vehicle and a mechanism that helps us, because there is a means to be able to say, hey, listen, this developer was a good partner in the city, right, with the city rather, and, you know, the project is coming and here are some benefits. I know we've talked about Woodlands previously, and, you know, we, there was a negotiation made, and I don't know what, I wasn't around for the initial vote for that project. I don't know, you know, I kind of came in to tail end of it, but I do think that at minimum, right, it needs to be proportionate. At least at five percent.
Thank you.
Point five percent, rather, excuse me.
Thank you. At this point in time, the only person who has any time left to speak would be Commissioner Wright. Do you have anything to say with your two minutes? City clerk?
Was that a monologue, Commissioner Patterson, or was it a question?
No, it was a statement, and she was passed for two minutes, and the applicants already said they're not giving any further. City clerk, please call the roll.
Point of clarification, Mayor, yeah, it was a question.
Question's already been asked and answered, would you wish to answer it again?
But I'm asking it, I'm asking it.
Would you wish to answer it again?
It wasn't framed the way that I framed it, I'm pointing out that there is, you know, we're asking that you guys consider at least putting it at, at point five, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is not even a percent of the total budget.
Yeah, and again, you know, we've looked at what other communities have done in terms of an affordable housing contribution. This is well above what has been done within the Woodmont community, above what's been done for affordable housing on other projects as well, and this is a site plan. The other projects, you know, it came with the development agreement and a lot of other negotiation as well. We're trying to be a good partner, we recognize the needs within the city, that's why, you know, my client went up from the one thousand dollars, because we agreed that that was, you know, fairly low, especially given the increased housing costs and concerns with inflation that have been ongoing over the years. So, you know, we made a good faith effort to increase our contribution because of that.
Understood, I guess, but my question around community benefits? My question around community benefits was something that, and I, I proffered a subcontractor. The vice mayor is saying that she has some concerns around that. So in lieu of, you know, partnering with local contractors, would you guys be amenable to adjusting that number? Because really, outside of that, there is no community benefit on the project.
Well, again, we see that as a community benefit, we see the wall as a community benefit, the additional improvements we're making along the right of way, along the median to the city sign. There are numerous community benefits that are attributable to this project. You know, again, we're, we're doing what we can, we're trying to be a good partner, we're willing to reach out to local contractors to see if we can get local contractors involved, that's not something, you know, we have any issue with. Ultimately, it would go through a bidding process, but, you know, we'll do what we can in our outreach efforts there as well.
Thank you. City clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gomez?
As amended, with condition twelve and thirteen.
Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Do we need to do a friendly amendment, or?
No, not in the cause of tradition.
Come on, man, I'm asking the attorney a question, don't get me started at eleven o'clock. I've been nice.
No, you haven't.
Well, these, these were modified condition, I think the approval, you know, one is twelve to expand the proffer to be broad, and also thirteen is to deal with the parking situation, which they agreed to review. And we'll get the language that situated through the, to the public, to the record of tonight. But it is, the vote will be as amended, I don't think, it's fine with me legally.
So, so it's reflected in this vote?
Correct.
Okay.
Take three, or maybe take four, city clerk, call the roll.
Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
No.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes four to one as amended.
Thank you.
Thank you, get home safely. City manager, we're not adjourned, city manager requests a moment of our time. City manager, please proceed.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you so much.
We're done, he asked a moment of our time.
I, I, I know, we're, we're eager to get out of here, but I also want to emphasize this, this one thing. Budgets are, are critical milestones in, in the, in the operation, operation of the city. And, and so this is the beginning of an exciting new year in, in the life of city of Tamarack, with all kinds of new projects, all kinds of improvements, and, and regardless of how we got there, you know, I wanted to acknowledge the commission's efforts and then thank you all for your participation in, in bringing this pleasure to a conclusion tonight. And I also want to acknowledge the city staff who contributed and participated in this long, arduous process to, to get to tonight. So it's a, it's a, it's a worthy occasion to celebrate despite the, the. Anyway, so I wanted to acknowledge the, the staff and the commission for their role in, in bringing the budget to this point. So thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, our next commission meeting is October eighth at seven P.M. Easy, fast, easy couple of weeks, good to see you, go home, get home safely, our meetings are adjourned eleven oh eight.